Roll call, please.
Mayor Canos?
Here.
Mr. Donahue? He's here.
Here.
Mr. Hammond?
Here.
Ms. McCready?
Here.
Mr. McQueen?
Here.
Mr. O'Day?
Here.
Ms. Amara?
Here.
Notice of this meeting was provided to the Burnsville News, Courier-News, and the Star Ledger, filed with the municipal clerk and posted on the municipal bulletin board on January 3rd, 2020. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. Do I have my flag? Just trying to brace myself here. I don't want to fall over. Okay, ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag
Flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which is
Which is one nation
Under God
Invisible
Liberty
Justice
For all
Liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're all there. Okay, we have no presentations tonight. We do have minutes to approve from July 13th and July 20th. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed? Okay.
I believe I was absent for July 20th.
Okay, I'll put you down to abstain for that one.
Okay. We now have an open public session, so if anyone in the public would like to be heard, if you go to the participants list down the bottom, there should be a place to raise your hand. You can click on Raise Your Hand, and we will unmute you, and then you can speak on any topic that you wish. Just, we limited to three minutes, so... Do we have anybody's hands up?
Yes, Dave DePodwin, let me...
Okay. So let's get
He's unmuted, yeah.
Hi, good evening. My comment revolves, as you might expect, around the proposed amendment, the motion on 2020-1847. My feeling is that that would remove the notification requirement. This is for amending the tree removal permit, excuse me, the tree protection ordinance.
If I may interject, there will be a public hearing on that ordinance.
Yes, but this is regarding the agenda item tonight for amending the motion? That's what my comment is in regard?
Yes, but we'll have a separate hearing just on that.
Right, that was my point.
Okay, would you prefer I hold my comment till then?
Yeah, that's a specific public hearing, so it's probably better just for the record that it be done then.
Okay, I can wait till later in the evening during the public session, if that's what you prefer?
Um, yeah.
It'll be soon.
Yeah, it won't be
Okay, no problem, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Did anybody else want to be heard on, or have a question or anything to say at this point? And there will be another open session at the very end, so if we didn't get to something you wanted to talk about, you'll have another opportunity. All right, I don't see anybody else, so I will close this public session. And next, we have a public hearing on Ordinance 2020-1845. So I will open the public hearing on that ordinance, which is an ordinance amending the borough property maintenance codes in their entirety and supplementing and amending Chapter 11 of the Borough Code entitled Property Maintenance. Does anyone from the public want to be heard on that ordinance? I do not see any. So I will close the public hearing on that. Where's Chad? Chad, do you want to
I'm right here.
ordinance?
Yeah, I'll move to pass ordinance 2020-1845.
I'm sorry, I couldn't get in the audio, and I'd like to comment on that. It's Peter Vermaat.
Oh, for the public hearing?
Yes, please, there. I'm sorry, I couldn't get the audio up.
Oh, okay, you didn't raise your hand, sorry. Go ahead.
I'm trying to have dinner. So... Um, yes, the, I asked that the section particularly dealing with the planting material in the front of the house, talks about weeds, shrubs, another thing, be tabled, and that the other part, if it's okay with the council, be passed, because we certainly want to get this thing passed. There are some issues with the way it is worded, and unfortunately, it leaves an awful lot of interpretation. I mentioned a letter earlier today about that to the zoning officer or whoever's doing inspections. And it's not really in the spirit of the direction of planting and plant material being encouraged and leaned on, or looked to by the state and other agencies around the country and state. There are also a number of ordinances that have been adopted that make it easier to follow and to administer, that allow things for plant material that might otherwise be considered wild. They also include specifics about maintenance, so that it looks permanent proper. And some areas even ask that they be registered with the town, so that, you know, if there's an issue that, you know, it can be addressed without having to go through applications and other problems. The concern is that we have staff that may not be familiar, staff changes, and leaving things open to interpretation, which is what is appropriate, what's right, is not in the best interest of the public or of the ecological things that we're facing. Whether it be a rain garden, which the borough has done, or the things, there are a lot of things that are changing, materials that are available today that haven't been available in 100 years, and many things that haven't come to market, but that will be, that will be incurred plant in the yards. So I ask that that particular section be tabled until we can hopefully look at something, go to the ordinances, speed it up, and get something passed quickly, because I certainly feel the urgency of getting that done. But I think anything else interim would be mature, and perhaps just make things more complicated.
Okay, thank you. Um, Chad, actually, Jack, I'm going to ask you, is it, can you take a section out and table it, or can we just pass this and go back and review that and amend it, like, you know?
Yeah, I suggest that you adopt the ordinance as written. The Housing Committee spent a great deal of time on it. There are things that have to be refined or clarified later. We could certainly take care of that, as we try to implement it.
Yeah, I guess I'm not sure what Peter's objection, he broke up a lot. I heard an objection to weeds, but I wasn't clear with what he was recommending or suggesting.
Well, I had a chance to talk with him a week or two ago or so about this, and I think his concern, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but as I understood it, his concern was the language might prohibit people who wanted to have some sort of natural garden, or plant natural grasses, or have native species on their yards. And I think the provision as currently worded protects that and allows for that, indeed. When I was on the committee last year, that very issue came up on a property, and our zoning officer, you know, agreed that that was appropriate.
Yeah, I agree with you. Actually, I went to that provision, and it seems appropriate to me, Jeff. Now, as you know, these things are constantly changing and always up to interpretation, right? And these are conversations that happen between the zoning officer and whoever the person in the public and landowner is.
Yeah, well, I do think, you know, it's incumbent upon us as a council to make sure that we have a professional zoning officer, which I think we do, times two, and that they stay up to date on all these provisions.
I second, I think you're right, Jeff.
We can certainly, we have a zoning meeting this week, we can certainly look at that. I know I have Peter's letter with what he was concerned about, so why don't we put that on the agenda for zoning on Thursday?
Sure, I have an, I have a open conversation right now about the agenda, so I can do that.
Okay.
But I would still want, because there's a lot of reasons why this needs to get done, I would not want to delay this ordinance for this.
I'd just like to add one thing. I understand that you want to do that, that you want to amend it. I hope that we do it quickly, and that you're bringing the more diverse group of experts, because unfortunately, the experts that were brought in have expertise in certain areas, but they don't have a broad understanding of many of the areas that are of great concern on a national, international, and local level. And by referring to certain of the experts that have absolutely no background in the area, and I don't mean this in any disrespect to the people that are there, but they're very narrow interested, and if you have a headache, you don't go to a brain surgeon. If you have a problem with your foot, you don't go to a, to a heart surgeon. So it's a kind of those things where they have a great deal of expertise, but overlap with some of these areas is maybe 20%. And, and I'm just asking you to be a little bit more broad in your future thinking, because these areas have been changing rapidly, and things that were known today were not even taught 25 years ago. And that's it. Go ahead and do what you feel is appropriate, but please be a little bit more open and diverse in the future.
Well, if I might say, I realize, Peter, and I know we've had a long debate about this, I realize that things do change, but we can't write ordinances for what might happen, as you say, 100 years from now.
I'm not asking you to do it 100 years from now, but this is, this is, this is based on basically 100 years ago, and a very archaic type of thinking. And there's actually, I found a tremendous research report on how people hate weeds. And there, you know, there are serious issues here that affect a lot of people that you're not aware of. I'm not saying that we have to be treated very, because of all those things. I'm absolutely for being pragmatic, and absolutely having enforcement tools, which would have been updated a long time ago, so that our people can do a good job. And Dr. Hammond, in all due respect, I'd like to have open conversations, and I find you a little bit missed at the time, even though your heart's in the right place. Thank you.
Okay, we will send that to zoning for Thursday. I have a copy of the letter, so we will review it then with ours and the people, and see if we can get more professional input, alrighty? Thank you, Peter. Now, Chad, you are up.
Uh, yeah, I'll move to pass ordinance 2020-1845 when final reading and adopt is published.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
There you go.
I didn't hear, I'm sorry. Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Sorry.
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. McCready?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Mr. O'Day?
Yes.
Ms. Amara?
Yes.
Okay, I will now open the public hearing on Ordinance 2020-1846, and ordinance concerning parking in the library parking lot, and amending Chapter 8 of the Borough Code entitled Parking Lots and Off-Street Traffic Regulations. And what this basically does is add a few more spots at the library for our recreation staff that is now moving into the downstairs of the library building. So would anyone from the public wish to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Jeff, would you like to move this?
I will, but I did have a quick question, because I know in the discussions at the library board, there was some, I guess, request about, since some of the people who are leasing the area below the library are no longer there, can we recoup any of those spaces for library patrons? And the second question was, because it was a little confusing in the language, are all of the spaces for the borough that along the one side, the entrance from Anderson Hill Road, so they're all there, so that the, for want of a better word, the prime spots in front of the library would be for patrons, particularly those who don't want to, can't walk a long distance?
Uh, I believe that's true.
I appreciate it, yes, yes.
Yes. They are all along the one side, yes?
Yes.
And I don't think, we will not be, I mean, at this point, I don't think we're renting the space that, where the tenants vacated, because the library is using it for storage. So that's probably the spaces we're trading off. So I don't think we're not adding more spaces, we're just reassigning them from the previous tenant.
Alrighty, then in that case, let's see, which one is this? I move pass ordinance 2020-1846, so final reading and adopt is published.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Oh, sorry, I just have a quick question, because I found the sign, the parking sign's kind of confusing over there. Are we, are we saying that the parking is not just for the staff who work there, but for people who need to come in and get a permit, or need to talk to the rec staff? Like, quote unquote, customers are allowed to park in those spots as well, right?
The first four.
Yeah, but, I mean, I don't know, for me, when I pull in there, I think I'm not allowed to park in any of those spots on left-hand side, even when I'm going to the borough office to get a permit. Like, is it, it just, I'm just saying, is it marked clearly for people that, so somebody coming for the first time knows they should park there to go to the borough offices?
Maybe the signs aren't clear, because it clearly says the first 17 shall be restricted to employees and patrons of the borough offices.
Right, and so that was, that's what caught my attention, and I, so I'm just asking, I'm not, I don't want to derail this discussion and the vote, but just, can we just double check, make sure the signage is clear?
Yeah, and if it's not, we can, maybe we should redo it to make sure people know.
Yeah, I mean, maybe, maybe it is clear, and I'm just the one who's confused, you know?
Yeah, you never confused, huh? Okay, so we good with the roll call vote now? Can we do that? And we'll check on the signage.
Okay, Ms. Amara?
Yes.
Mr. O'Day?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Ms. McCready?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Okay, I will open the public hearing on Ordinance 2020-1847, and ordinance concerning tree removal permits and amending Chapter 13 of the Borough Code entitled Tree Protection. And I believe this is the one that Mr. DePodwin wanted to speak on.
Yes.
So, I will open that public session. Anthony, you want to unmute Mr. DePodwin?
Yeah, he's on mute.
Okay.
Yes, hi, thank you very much. While the proposed amendment to the tree protection ordinance under motion 2020-1847 would remove the notification requirement, and also leave just one level of appeal within the town government, thereby possibly limiting and reducing the town's exposure to tree removal permits issued for reasons counter to the ordinance, the proposed changes do nothing to help maintain a robust tree protection ordinance for the protection of the environment, especially trees, as they relate to possible negative effects, negative impacts to adjacent property owners. In addition, and I'm almost finished, the MLUL Municipal Land Use Law encourages all New Jersey towns to govern themselves with regard to enforcing state and federal environmental laws, including tree protection and tree removal permits. Therefore, in short, eliminating the current second level of appeal would, one, remove an important checks and balance for shade tree committee and tree conservation officer decisions regarding tree removals, while also, number two, placing an unnecessary burden on citizens to resort to the courts to seek relief. In this light, I encourage the council members to vote no, and not to amend the tree ordinance as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one, just one point with respect to notice, it's not totally removed. Notice is still required to abutting property owners, as opposed to all properties within 200 feet of the subject property.
Can you clarify that, 200 would be removed, however, what?
Notice still must be given to abutting property owners.
Oh, abutting, okay.
Right, so you would have received notice in the last appeal, the council gave it.
My overall comment stands, though, in terms of the intent. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay, anyone else from the public wish to be heard on this ordinance? I don't see any other hands raised.
I have a question, is this, is the, is the, I guess, the idea of an appeal to a borough or a town council normal, or is what we're proposing, which is the appeal goes directly to the court, the norm?
Under the municipal land use law, the only appeals that come directly to the council are the granting of use variances by the Board of Adjustment. No other development application appeals come to the council, they all go directly to the courts.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have another clarifying question for our attorney. So you said that abutting properties would need to be notified.
Yes.
So, you know, if I, if I live on the left-hand side of the street, I have two houses to my left and right, I have one directly behind me, so what about the catty-corner ones behind me, or the ones on the opposite side of the street? Do they get notification?
They're not legally required to get notification, but I think it's a practical matter. You know, if there's a really controversial tree removal, where it's going to get around the neighborhood? It just seemed onerous to require notice that all properties within 200 feet for the removal of several trees on a private property. You know, and the shade tree commission could always require, or give notice themselves to other property owners if they felt it was appropriate.
Anyone else? Okay, then I will close the public hearing. Who's on shade tree? You, Tom?
I am, yes.
Okay, would you like to move that?
Yes, so I, I moved to pass ordinance 2020-1847, an ordinance concerning tree removal permits and amending Chapter 13 of the Borough Code entitled Tree Protection.
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. McCready?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Mr. O'Day?
Yes.
Ms. Amara?
Yes.
Okay, oh, we have another public hearing. There's a lot of public hearings. All right, I will open the public hearing on Ordinance 2020-1848, authorizing the acquisition by purchase or condemnation of the real property located at 210 North Finley Avenue, block 175, Lot 25, Burnsville, New Jersey, which is now owned by Altamare Realty, Inc. And this is acquiring property for our COA obligation. Would anyone from the public wish to be heard on this ordinance? I don't see any hands, so I will close the public hearing on this ordinance.
I believe, Mayor, I believe that's a typo in the title. I think it's block 125, not 175.
125, okay.
Yes.
All right.
It's an important one.
Yeah.
We don't want to condemn the wrong property.
John, would you like to move that one? One, maybe?
I'm back on you.
Yeah, no, yeah, I'm good, hold on, just slowing the keyboard here. Yeah, it's, I moved to pass ordinance 2020-1848, authorizing the acquisition by purchase or condemnation of the real property located at 210 North Finley Avenue, block 175, lot, whatever Jack, whatever 25, whatever Jack said.
125, 25.
125, 25. Located in Burnsville, New Jersey, and now owned by Altamare Realty, Inc.
Can I just make this vote subsequent to 100% certainty from Jack on the lot number?
Let me double check, hang on.
Go look it up.
I think that's an important detail we need to get right.
Yeah, absolutely. Give me one sec.
Some homeowner could be surprised when we said we bought your place.
One second.
I can reread it with the correct one if you need me to.
All you have to read is that one line?
Okay.
Yes.
210 North Finley is...
That moved to pass on final reading and adopted that one.
Give me one second.
Here, I found it. It's 125.
That's, my word is very slow opening up, sorry. It is 125, I assure you it was.
Okay. All right, then, John, just read that one sentence there before it says second.
Okay. I moved to pass ordinance 2020-1848 on final reading and adopt as published.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Amara?
Yes.
Mr. O'Day?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Ms. McCready?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Okay, um, let me get, uh, yeah. Councilman O'Day, why don't you introduce the next ordinance? For Finance Committee.
Sorry, yeah, you want, did you say me, Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I move ordinance 2020-1849, an ordinance appropriating $11,000 from the Borough's Open Space Trust Fund for reimbursement to Somerset Hills Little League for renovations to the Quanis Little League Field, to be introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law, and a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning at 7:00 PM on Monday, September 14th, 2020.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Comments, questions?
I just, I will need to recuse myself as an executive of Somerset Hills Little League from, because this kind of, from the vote, but I'm here in case, I think there may be members of the executive board in the audience that have questions, I'm always happy to answer them.
I have a question, how did we come to the 50-50 split? Was that proposed by Little League, or was that proposed by us?
It was proposed by the executive board of Little League.
And I, and what improvements are contemplated? Because I didn't see that in the document, unless I missed it.
There are two primary ones, and maybe I'll speak as a safety officer of the league. Over time, as you rake a field, a dirt mound and lip builds up on the front face of the infield that becomes a hazard for balls to basically launch in the little kids' faces. About every eight to 10 years, the field and the infield should be resurfaced, and it's been much longer than that. So reason one was actually an issue that I raised as safety officer a couple of years ago. We've been looking to mitigate it, we've tried some mandates, but they haven't worked. The second and more important reason, as the children age, they progress in field size, and this proposed change would increase the field of one of our majors' field from being what is called a 45-60 field to a 50-70 field. And this will allow us to retain 13-year-olds and increase the age limit that we have that play on our fields from 12 to 13, once this renovation's done next year.
And, and first of all, let me just say, I'm in favor of the, I'm just asking a lot of questions, but I'm in favor of the proposal. But how do we adjudicate these? I mean, what mechanism do we have for vetting or deciding on these requests that may now start come for use of the Open Space Trust Fund? Does it go through open space, does it go through recreation? How do we do this? This is just a general question for anybody.
There is, there is a resolution we passed of the committees it's supposed to go through. So we introduce it, then it goes to recreation, open space, environmental, I think in shade tree. So everybody reviews the expense. So by the time we have the public hearing, we've gotten input back from them.
Okay, and that's what I remember. So just to be complete, everybody did, we went through that process?
I don't think we did that process this year. I think we were, we saw, we reviewed, this is our Finance Committee meeting a week ago, and we were debating whether or not to put it on the agenda for tonight. And what we were concerned with was that if the work needed to be completed before, say, the winter set in, we only have one meeting in August, we have, the next meeting isn't until September 14th. We need to pass a separate ordinance to use open space money, is that right? Jack said something else after this. So it could take up to three meetings to get it approved?
So going forward, we would adhere to that policy?
Pardon me?
So going forward, this is a one-off, and going forward, we would adhere to that, the policy?
We still are. We have a month now for all those people to weigh in before we approve it. Right now, we're just introducing the concept. We're not approving it until September, so we...
Okay, that's my mistake, then, I thought we were voting on it finally, okay.
No, we're just introducing it. So we do have time to get input from all those people. So we do have time to get input from all those people, the way we're supposed to. So I did have a second on that, right?
Yep.
Okay, so we can just do, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Yes. Chad, you want to move the next one? Just option. 1850?
Yep. I'm just on the wrong portion of the document somewhere. I move that ordinance 2020-1850, ordinance of the Borough, Bernardsville, New Jersey, authorizing the acquisition by purchase or condemnation of the real property at Block 102, Lot 12, Bernardsville, New Jersey, now owned by the estate of Michael Manella. Be introduced by title and passed on first reading, published according to law, and that a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning at 7:00 PM on Monday, September 14th, 2020.
Do you have a second?
No second.
Okay, and again, this is another COA acquisition for our COA requirement. Questions, comments? From the council? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right, now. Christine, would you like to move the next? Just for spreading it around here. Give everybody a turn.
I'm still awake.
Yeah.
An ordinance establishing an expiration date for construction records clearance certificates and supplementing and amending Chapter 12 of the Borough Code entitled Building and Housing.
John?
Keep going.
Be introduced by...
Oh, sorry, to be introduced by title, passed on second reading and published according to law.
First reading.
I'm sorry, first reading and published according to law. I do have a question about this one, though.
Go ahead, we'll just finish it. A public hearing, go ahead, and then we'll do that.
Oh, I'm not finding the verbiage, but a public hearing is for September...
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
September 14th, 2020.
That's it, okay. Do we have a second? Somebody?
A second.
Okay, go ahead. Question, Christine?
Did this come out of housing or what? And what's the reasoning behind it?
Yeah, it didn't come out of housing. And I was going to ask Jeff. I'm assuming that this is something that came from Jeff.
Yes, it is.
Jack, I don't know if you have an explanation.
I think...
Maybe he's here?
Renee is here.
It came from Jeff. And it does make sense because, you know, after 90 days, you could have additional outstanding permits during that 90-day period as you're going to sell your house. So, you know, it was, the request was directly from Jeff by email.
Renee is here. Do you want to add anything on that to clarify?
Yeah, good evening, everyone. What's, what it really needed was an expiration date because what the problem is that we were coming about was a lot of, you know, different buyers or prospective buyers would be interested in a property. They would do things like, for example, they would put in a radon system because it was part of like their closing negotiating items, and the sale would fall through, and now you would have still an open permit, and a new buyer would come along. And again, now we have open permits, and there was no expiration for that, that construction records clearance document. So now we were not able to close out now that new permit that they opened because of the, you know, closing that had happened. And radon is just, you know, the prime example that always comes up in a closing for the most part, if the house needed it or required it. But other electrical work, you know, that we see that they open up permits and they never get closed, and that's the sole purpose of this records clearance is to close out as many permits as we can on a property when it's being, you know, sold to a new owner.
Renee, that's not, this isn't a mechanical closure. There is going to be a physical inspection of these things before closure? Is that what it does?
So, you know, really, it actually depends on the nature of the permit that's been taken out. So in this sense, it's typically a construction permit that becomes now new and it's an open permit. And the only way to close it is that an inspector goes to do the inspection as per the Uniform Construction Code, and then it closes the permit out. So just for administrative purposes and the purpose of this clearance record or records clearance, you know, we need to keep the permits closed, so to speak. You know, whatever's open needs to become closed so that it's a finished business in our records.
So it applies when a house is being sold?
Yes, that's correct.
So only in that circumstance?
But, but not if somebody's got the house and they're still living there for the next 10 years?
Correct, that you would have no reason to do a CRC.
Right. Got it. Okay, thank you for the explanation, Renee.
You're welcome.
So that will be, we'll have a public hearing on that at the next meeting. Chad, you want to do the next one?
Yes. You can vote on that one?
Oh, I'm sorry, we didn't.
You have to vote on that.
Okay, roll, no, it's not a roll call. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Did somebody move it and second it?
Yes, we do that.
Got it.
All right, now.
I am not, sorry.
1852.
I move that ordinance 2020-1852, supplementing and amending Article 12 of the Borough Land Use Ordinance entitled Zoning to amend Section 2023-15 signage. Be introduced by title, passed on first reading, and published according to law, and that a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning at 7:00 PM on Monday, September 14th, 2020.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Chad, you want to give us a little info on this?
Yeah, and I know that there are a couple of questions, and maybe I'll let Jeff ask that because he raised a really good one. So this project actually goes back to when Jeff was on that committee as councilperson, and I was there as chair, and then subsequently picked me up as I've gone. Going back to about September last year, it was very clear that we needed updating of two of our ordinances and actually combining of them. So through the winter months, Jeff primarily, and then as I came on, I helped work for Jack Pigeon and the zoning committee to combine those ordinances and modernize them, tighten them up. And actually, I'm talking about the wrong one, so I'll get back up. This is, this is the sign ordinance.
Yes.
Sorry, it's been a long day. So the signed ordinance, this also was, was an ordinance moving along a similar path. This is also in parallel nature to the zoning overlay, which has just come out of committee a couple of weeks ago, which will be introduced to committee, to this group next week. So everyone, as everyone's aware, our signed ordinance was old and antiquated along with topology and common ground. This has been updated. It started in the zoning enforcement group. It then went to the planning board, and it has now moved from the planning board to this group. So the big thing, when you're looking at these new ordinances in regards to the zoning overlay, is actually the attachments in the back. There's a lot of technical language within the ordinance, but the illustrations really give you the look and feel of what we're trying to accomplish from a borough perspective. So as you're reading the ordinance as we introduce it for public comment next week, I encourage everyone to look at the illustrations because I think they're very instructive in what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
And Jeff, I know you had a question, so I think it's an important one.
I think it's all very good, and this goes back to when you and I did our walking survey of the town and looked at every sign in the town. And it focuses primarily, although not exclusively, on the electronic signs. My question focuses on those. And so when I read this ordinance, and correct me if I'm wrong, maybe I missed it, it was rather lengthy, but it doesn't talk about existing signs and whether they're grandfathered in or not. And my concern is that if we write this wonderful ordinance and we set these wonderful standards, but then we allow, and my understanding from Mr. Pigeon from before is that if it was legal before, it's going to be, you know, we can't make it illegal now, then in truth, we end up doing nothing. And that's a fatal flaw because all those electronic signs that you want to do away with that are flashing or, you know, that are oversized, et cetera, will remain. So I think that we have to tackle the tough question about do we reimburse those business owners for the cost of their signs so we can eliminate the offensive ones? If it's offensive in our new standards and we still allow those signs to exist, then we haven't achieved anything. And that's my concern about this ordinance.
Well, Jeff, if I could alter one of your statements, and I think I'm altering it correctly, and you correct me if I'm wrong. So the big concern here, Jack, and I'm very interested in your opinion, there were signs that were not allowed per the last ordinance?
Right, so they would still be illegal.
Still not allowed.
Only signs that were legal prior to the adoption of this ordinance would be grandfathered. They would be considered non-conforming structures. But any sign that's not legal now will not become legal.
True, and then the flashing signs, for example, were illegal before, but there were signs that, because our ordinance at that time, I believe, said neon signs, there were other forms of illuminated signs that were, would conform to the language such as it existed.
Yeah.
We could argue neon was a generic term as opposed to a specific type of sign, but we'll deal with that as it comes up.
Well, my understanding from the zoning, from Jeff Price, was that, in fact, they felt their hands were tied on that.
I haven't spoken to Jeff.
I'd certainly like to have this sent back to the authors to really consider that, to examine what we're going to do about signs that will remain, that we would prefer not to be there.
Does that mean it's part of the...
That's not going to be part of this ordinance. Legally, if they're non-conforming structures, they can continue, you know, after adoption of this ordinance. But the ordinance can't make any changes in that regard. The council can make a decision that you want to buy out sign owners and get them to replace their signs, but that would not be part of the zoning ordinance per se.
Sort of like a parallel, or it's our next step? It's not, it's not this ordinance. This ordinance, perhaps the approach would be we move forward on this ordinance, and then in parallel or next step, we then decide what to do with non-conforming structures?
Exactly.
Well, but I think there's a gray area here, which is really, and again, I'll speak for myself, which is really challenging. There were signs that clearly did not conform to the old ordinance. And we chose not to enforce at that time because we knew we had a new ordinance. We didn't want to enforce something that would or possibly could be within the ordinance as it moved forward. In the decisions that have gone forward, those types of signs are not permissible in this new ordinance. So I think the bigger question is, you know, how do we, I guess we have to go back and just to enforcement, Jeff, and enforce the things that weren't enforceable before, and they still aren't now.
Right, I think we need to do that. Once the ordinance passes, that's the first thing we should do.
So under the new ordinance, Chad, under the new ordinance, would the illuminated sign in front of the coffee shop, which I find to be very tasteful, I think it's very nice, would that be permissible? Because under the old ordinance, I'm not sure it would be.
Let me, let me find the section, Jeff. I don't know if you have it in front of you. Give me page number.
No, I do not.
How about this? I can run that by, so the important witness here is, to be honest, Jeff from Renee's. I'm filling space while I'm scrolling the long ordinance here.
If I may just add, I guess, a little insight on enforcement. I think the ultimate goal was to really have a, a great sign ordinance, and that's just something that we just don't have currently. And I think that, you know, the, the planning board has been very diligent with their review to really ensure that this is going to be encouraging business and, you know, whatever other details that are important for a sign ordinance. So I think once we do have that firm and it's, and it's been approved, you know, that's where Jeff and I have always discussed that that's a great time to then weed out your illegal signs. And we do them still. I mean, there are plenty of signs that we, you know, sent out violations for and notify the owner. So it's not that it's not being enforced. There are just some things that are very difficult to enforce right now as the sign ordinance is being completely transformed.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, 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 you're, you're fine.
So in terms of the issue of enforcement, again, because the document was rather lengthy, so I'm trying to figure out what it actually says. So one of the concerns, for example, was you're not allowed to have, under the current ordinance, above a certain percentage of your windows with a sign on them. And you're not allowed to have multicolored signs. And yours, or should we say, store owners have gotten around that by placing their signs, I forgot how many inches in from, from the window, and now all of a sudden it becomes legitimate. Did we remedy that loophole?
So, so Jeff, let me go back to the previous questions. Rotating signs, live-action signs, flashing interjeter signs, variable message or scrolling signage, and/or intermittent illuminated signs are prohibited.
Yeah, that I saw. But the question came up about, at least I thought that it said, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought it said neon are similar signs. In other words, the sign in front of the coffee shop, which is sort of a retro kind of sign, kind of an art deco sign. You and I both commented that it looked nice. Would that be prohibited?
My understanding is yes. And I asked the question, it's going, this has been in planning for a while, Jeff. It was not amongst the aesthetic that the topology and chemo gram are going for.
So I think if you want to look specifically at what you're talking about in the ordinance itself, you would go to page 59. It's marked on the page, page 10 of the ordinance, and it's letter F. It refers to wall signs. Wall signs may be, this is number five. Wall signs may be internally or externally illuminated. Internal illumination shall be limited to the letters and the logo. And then the next section talks about window signs, where Dr. Jeff, you just said, it can't be more than 20% of the area of the window. So that's all on page 58.
And store owners got away, they got around that currently because they set it back from the window, so many inches. I don't remember how many there are. And then they can have a full window sign, for example, because it's not technically in the window.
Right.
That's a loophole. And then, did we, did we fix that?
Renee, have you guys, have you and Jeff asked that question of this?
When it comes to window signs...
Yeah, as far as the setting back.
I mean, it, I mean, there's really, I guess, kind of so much we can put for our input. It's really up to the planning board to decide, you know, what's coming in and out.
Now that it's a council, this is an open discussion in regards to the final language that we can amend. So I'm looking for your input, if you have it. And if you want to do it and consult with Jeff, that's fine, too.
But isn't that just for the illuminated ones that they set back?
No, no. It's colored signs, you're not allowed to have more than three colors, and it's also for the signs.
The three colors was taken out.
So I think if we want to just talk about one specific piece of this ordinance because there are many variations of what kind of sign you can have. You could have a wall sign, a window sign, you know, a freestanding sign. So if we're discussing the window sign, let's, let's discuss that so that there's just clarification. I mean, setting back, you know, having a sign that's set back from the window, I think it has to be a foot from the window, I think, is currently in the ordinance. It might be two. I could be wrong. I don't have it right in front of me. But, you know, I mean, loophole-wise, I guess it's really kind of up to, to you guys what you would prefer to see, you know, in a storefront window.
Well, I think, I think the point is, like, both, I mean, Jeff, I don't want to speak for you. I don't think that's something, that loophole we would like to close. I would, I would like to make that statement, Jeff.
My, my, my point is pretty, pretty simple. I don't think this, this ordinance is ready yet. And I don't, I don't think it's been pressure-tested with a lot of what-if questions.
So I think the place where it needs to be pressure-tested, to be honest, Jeff, is in the Housing Committee, Housing Zoning Enforcement Committee. The planning board did their thing. I think there's some specific... Um, I think there's some specific things in regards to enforcement that probably need to be asked.
I think that makes sense, uh, councilman, because the, the bottom line is the people who are going to have to enforce it should look at the wording, make sure that the wording is enforceable, which has traditionally been an area where we've fallen short. It's in the enforcement side. So if the enforcement people aren't happy with the ordinance, then yeah, we should take a pause, I think. So maybe that is the right place for it.
I greatly appreciate that, um, approach, um, because a lot of the time, you know, we, we are bypassed, the, the committee that we try to help because, you know, it's just not part of the process typically. Um, and, and, and I think it'd be great for Jeff and I to definitely give our input, um, as much as possible, because yes, it, it is something that we do have to enforce at the end of the day. Um, so if you're up for that.
So I think the question is. I'd like to recommend that this goes to Thursday.
Jack, can we still introduce it or should we take it?
I, I think in light of this discussion, we should pull it from the agenda before we introduce it. I, I do note, and this is maybe worth looking into, that Long Hill, uh, defines window sign as one that's visible to the general public from a non-doors position. So that may be one way to get around the, the shop owners putting the sign four inches back from the window.
I, I like that suggestion because if that's, I mean, if that's the effect, if, if the effect of putting it one foot behind the window is that it's a window sign, then it should be treated as a window sign.
Yes.
Okay, so let's do that. We will take it off the agenda. Um, again, housing is going to have a big agenda come Thursday.
We're not busy.
But no, yeah, we will pass that on and well, Jeff's on vacation this week, um, Jeff Price, so, but Renee will be there. And, uh, you know, you, we'll let you go through it and see what changes we want to make.
And Mary Jane, as a matter of process, because I, obviously I, I've mentioned this a couple of times. The, the zoning overlay, it's done. Uh, I know that we, we wanted some final comments in our last planning board meeting. Uh, this is the type of ordinance which is going to require discussion. Um, so when, when that ordinance finally appears to, to you, Anthony, can we have a working meeting on that ordinance versus moving it as it stands?
Um, and again, let me just ask, if Renee and Jeff have been involved in that process.
Not enough.
So again, maybe it goes there next before it comes to us? Um, and have them look through it before we start.
Yeah, I can take it, I could probably take it there now. It's ninety-nine point nine percent complete. So not, and we may have to have a six hour meeting on Thursday.
Oof, they have to go.
Procedurally, this was introduced, so Chad should probably withdraw his motion to introduce. This is the records player.
Yeah, we didn't get a second.
I'll withdraw my motion and refer it to zoning.
Add on another meeting for housing and zoning, just add on another meeting.
I, I think we need to, Jeff.
Yeah, okay.
And then I would recommend, you know, when this, when the time comes, because the, I mean, look, it took the planning board, I, I don't know the exact number, six or seven meetings to do the zoning overlay. It's that dense and it's that technical. Um, I don't expect that this committee should digest it instantly. Um, there'll be a lot of questions. So Jack, I don't know what the mechanism is for us to have a, a thorough discussion about it when it arrives.
I, I think the best way to do is put it on as an item of business for discussion, the meeting prior to introduction.
Yeah.
So Anthony, a lot of these things don't come funnel back for me. I know they sometimes funnel directly from Frank. When you see the zoning or, ordinance, instead of putting it on as a motion, can you put it on as a new business?
Okay, we'll do.
The other thing is we don't want to take too much time on this because this has to be incorporated into the Quimby Lane, um, redevelopment plan. So we really, you know, this, the more rapidly we can move this along and make sure that it goes through zoning. And then we have a chance to look at it and maybe by September, we get this all wrapped up, um, sometime that month. I think that would be great. If we need to have an extra meeting to do that, you know, we can do that.
I think so.
It may be worthwhile just, uh, and maybe this is what you were proposing, Chad, I'm not sure. But, uh, if we have a meeting, a separate meeting put on just for that zoning overlay.
Yeah.
Is that what you're proposing?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're, did you withdraw your, you withdrew your, uh, motion?
Yeah, so I'll withdraw my motion. Um, I moved the agenda forward. You need the, uh, the number again, Jack?
Twenty-two, eight, fifty-two?
Uh, I'll, I'll withdraw my motion for twenty-two, twenty, uh, eighteen, fifty-two.
Fifty-two.
And I withdraw my second.
Yes.
All right, moving on to resolutions. Um, I'm assuming we're pulling off twenty-two oh seven, do separately. Does anyone have any other ones they want to discuss before we do a consent agenda of the resolutions? Anybody have questions on any of the other resolutions?
I, I'm sorry, I can't pull up the, um, actual agenda, but is the RFP for the train station here or is that in the items of other business? Jack, shake this.
That's up for discussion later.
Yeah, good, okay.
Any other items on there? No, uh, well, would someone like to move twenty-one, ninety-four A through twenty-two oh six?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. McCready?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Ms. O'Day?
Yes.
Ms. Semara?
Yes.
Okay, resolution twenty-two oh seven. This is the racism and discrimination and recommendation for action resolution. Um, Jeff, you want to talk about where it came from?
Sure, so just, uh, for those who, who are on the line, um, so I think it was back in June, uh, the county freeholders adopted a resolution. And, um, my understanding is they requested each of the twenty-one municipalities to adopt it a- as well. Uh, some municipalities did, some, including our own, did not. Uh, when we reviewed it at that time, uh, we thought that it was, uh, uh, too adversarial that it, and it did not pertain to, um, to Bernardsville. It really wasn't meaningful to us because it did not necessarily address our issues. It was focused more on, for example, police brutality issues, uh, in the wake of, uh, George Floyd's death. Uh, and, uh, we felt that it needed to be broader and, and, uh, have some sort of action item. It was an acknowledgement and encouraged state and federal legislators to, to take action, but there was nothing specific. And so the Public Safety Committee was charged with coming up with, uh, uh, alternative language. Uh, we met, uh, virtually, um, by email. The, um, did not come to, our group did not come to consensus. Um, and I'll, I'll let per, I'll let, kind of, uh, Councilman, um, Donahue speak for himself. But we had alignment from Councilwoman Zamarra, myself and, uh, Chief Valentine. Um, I tried to modify the language, um, at the request of Chief Valentine. And I inserted some language that was suggested by the Councilman Donahue. Uh, and I included, uh, some action items that were developed in consultation with our administrator, Ralph Mareska and the recreation head, uh, Bob Markowitz. So this is where we are and it's, uh, some of the language is rather pointed and I know that that's part of the objection that some people have. Uh, I think actually that's a good thing because I think in this, in this instance, we have to feel uncomfortable. Uh, I think we have to have, um, an impetus for action. Uh, and, uh, I think at that point, I'll just open it up for discussion.
I'll, I'll chime in because I was a lone dissenter. And again, you know, first of all, it's, it's not a dissent because I don't see the importance of this, agree with the importance of this. I think it's a difference of approach and I think Jeff and I, I, I think it was a pretty thoughtful, interesting discussion about it. But I'll kind of summarize where I'm coming from. It's like the second whereas, you know, or yeah, the second whereas, they have a history of violence and harm. I, I objected at a couple of levels. One philosophically, because I think it suggests there's a community or a legacy guilt or criminality. You know, they might not be the right words. I'm trying to like, you know, trying to struggle to find them, uh, of, you know, unspecified. And I think in history, that's been often used to, uh, to really bad effect, even in twentieth century. You can point to like, you know, a lot of different instances, whether it be in Rwanda, Europe in the forties or forced collectivizations. I know it's a simple, you know, resolution, but I think the concept of this is really important and something, you know, I just can't go on board with. And two, I think it's not specific, you know, if you're talking about this, what and who? So I think, you know, you ignore sixty-five years of, you know, laws and Supreme Court decisions, both establishing, upholding and defending rights of minorities and everyone to be, you know, free from fear and the right opportunity. And I guess further down, you know, directing a ninety-day review, to me, a, a couple of things. One, it feels like an admission that something's wrong here, which I don't think, I think it's unfair. I think it also, you know, reading again, you know, the other day, my, my fake lawyer hat on, you know, it also kind of suggests that, you know, what we weren't doing, you know, we were compliant with, you know, all laws and regulations at all times. We weren't compliant and, you know, this was a litigious society. If someone decides to sue us, they point to that saying, well, see, you're admitting right there that you weren't doing things right. So I think it's kind of a philosophical objection on the approach. And I know the mayor, you know, craft had tried to craft something in the middle, which I think personally, in my opinion, strikes the, the better note. But, uh, I'll leave it to you guys to discuss because, you know, Jeff, I use a lot of airtime on this and, uh.
That's okay, I, I, if I could just rebut that.
Sure, absolutely, as we were doing all weekend, so.
And again, I think John and I had a very thoughtful dialogue back and forth. Uh, I've had an opportunity to, uh, obviously to talk to the, the police chief and to, uh, Christine Zamarra and to Gina McCready. Um, and actually Chad McQueen. Listen, I think everybody's coming from a, a good spot. I don't think that this is accusatory to the, to the borough. I do argue that, that the second bullet point, which talks about a history of violence is true. And the fact that we've had sixty years, as you put it, of, uh, of, of progress is still not enough or else we wouldn't be in this spot. I do, uh, in terms of the ninety-day review, remember that the original, um, uh, freeholder resolution called for an overhaul of policies, which we all felt was objectionable. Uh, and so what this one calls for as a modification of that is that we're directing the borough administrator to meet with his department heads, to come back and give us a plan of how he's going to, they're going to review policies. Now, we may find that the review of policies is great and that we are a model. Or we may find that there's unintended discrimination or unintended bias that we can remedy. That's what's behind it. There's no, there's no accusation that we're doing something wrong or non-compliant. It's, it is a call for review. And I think that, uh, the, the problem I have with, uh, the mayor's alternative is that there's no call to action. Specifically, it's an acknowledgement and it basically says, well, we're going to do something in the future, but doesn't say what it is. And that's the problem with the other example. For example, the Hillsborough, uh, resolution that you shared with me and, and others. This one actually says, we're going to do something. We're going to make mandatory training on cultural competency. We're going to require training of our, um, administrators on, on some human relation skills. This is all built into this resolution as saying, we're actually going to do something and not have a platitude.
Well, I, I can respectfully rebut your rebuttal. Well, I, I think we do have a diversity committee and that was, you know, that's, that's kind of being proactive in response to this, I think. You know, so I do think, you know, less prescriptive is better because we need to really kind of look at, you know, what would work best for us and accomplish what we all want at the end of the day, you know, so, uh.
Well, I'd like to hear from, I'd like to hear from the other council members.
So, I mean, so Jeff, you know, I, I, I tend to, to, to be more with, with, with where John is on this. I, I think, and look, that's level set. I think we're all saying the same thing, but slightly differently. I mean, there was a discussion at the personnel committee about, uh, a, a potential hire and how we were going to go about it differently. Those are the kinds of things that, that create change. And that, that's action. I, I don't think basically an ordinance that, that says everyone is doing bad things is the way to start about going about real change. I, I think that the way to start about real change is actually to mean it and to do it. Uh, and I believe wholeheartedly that everyone on this council believes that. And I think that, I mean, I'll, your actions the other day, um, spoke to it directly.
So, uh, uh, for my opinion, I, I don't think that this suggests that there's anything bad going on. I don't think that there's in, any admission that something's wrong based on how I read this wording. Uh, the, the flip side is, uh, we, we should, if we do nothing, we're assuming everything is all right without even examining it. So I think that it makes sense to have a ninety-day review period. It may uncover some unintended bias. Uh, it may just show that there's some improvement possible. Maybe we're not perfect. I would suggest that it's, it would be highly unlikely if we would say that everything's perfect. I don't believe that there's any implication that bad things are going on that's been written here. I think we've addressed that from the first version of this. I strongly support it as it's written. I think we need to do something and we need to do something more significant. We're at a point of reckoning in this country. There were the largest demonstrations in the history of the United States, perhaps the largest demonstrations in the history of the world. If we sit on the, uh, our laurels or, or, or rest on, you know, what we've already done and said that's sufficient without even looking at what we're doing, I just think that that's not enough.
Yeah, okay, so I'll chime in a little. Um, so I think, um, I, I think I'm kind of in, in the, in the middle, spanning both camps here. Um, and mainly I think that the, um, the whereas clauses within, um, the, the update that the mayor had sent, um, is more, um, is more factual and less emotional. Um, so I like those better. Um, but when it comes to being actionable, I think that, you know, I mean, I agree that we need to do something. And I don't think that it's necessarily an admission of guilt per se. I mean, we could mess in wordsmith, um, with, with the wording, but, um, to assume that we don't have any room for improvement, as Councilman O'Day was alluding to or saying as well, um, I think is, you know, not, um, I don't want to use too strong of a word, but, um, it's just kind of maybe short-sighted. So I.
Sergeant, good.
No, so I was just going to say that I think that, you know, a ninety-day action plan would be good. I mean, maybe they come back and say, we have nothing to do and everything is perfect. I don't think that will be the case. Um, but, um, at least they can go back and take a look. Um, and I think training at a minimum, as you said, um, Dr. Hammond, that, you know, I, I think that we could use it. I mean, I get training all the time on, um, you know, different topics at my own job, including, um, you know, how to handle diversity and things. So I don't think it's a bad thing at all.
Well, so I, I think this gets to, look, what, what is the point here? Um, and I, I'm asking that question a bit rhetorically. So, you know, one of the things that, that has come up is hiring practices. So when I think of the way that we hire and seek for new potential employees to this borough, and we had this discussion at a couple, a couple of, um, points. It, it's not just about race or bias. It, it's about are our hiring practices modern or not? Uh, which includes the latter or the former, depending on what, and may, what order I mention them in. So, um, I mean, are, are we going to go through a, a personnel man- manual with this lens and avoid the other lenses, which we're, 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 we also need to, to look through them with?
Well, that's actually not our discuss, the decision. That's up for the borough administrator to come back to us with his plan. That's what this, this charges. You know, listen, I, if the stumbling block, well, let me, let me go backwards here. I, I think it's incumbent upon us to demonstrate leadership here. We had a thousand plus people peacefully demonstrate. Uh, I, I think we were all astounded by the turnout and by the, the peacefulness of this. Um, this is our moment. Uh, this is a, this is one of the trigger points, uh, that people will look back on historically. I think we have to demonstrate leadership and that's why I think we have to, as a borough and as a council representing the borough, have to own this. Um, I was always taught that leadership says, follow me, it doesn't say, go there, it says, follow me. And that's what we need to do. And that's why I put the, or authored the draft, uh, that, uh, was generally agreed upon, at least, uh, three to one, um, uh, with the action plan. If the stumbling block is the whereas is, because people feel that it's a little too touchy or a little too close to home. I personally feel that that's important. I, I stand by that language, but I don't want that to stand, uh, to, to undermine the, uh, the really important part of this, which is the action. Uh, again, to just say that we acknowledge that bad things happen in the world and that we call upon others to take action is insufficient to me. Uh, so, so if it means to, to preserve the, the action points that were outlined, uh, I'd be willing to compromise and to say, we'll accept the mayor's whereas is and we'll marry that, we'll blend that with the Public Safety Committee's action plan. blend that with the Public Safety Committee's action plan.
Can I see the mayor's whereas', are they attached somewhere?
Well, no, they weren't actually shared. I, I got it indirectly from, from, I almost said Congress. I gave you a promotion, John.
Wow, you actually... I don't think I want that promotion. Thank you very much.
They're in the Public Safety Committee as a possible alternative, so it was not to be on the agenda. It was just, you know, some suggested changes.
Well, this is what came out of the committee, well, I, I'm not, I'm not willing to change something to something I haven't seen.
No, I just want to give my point of view here, as a member of the Public Safety Committee that went through this in very much detail. First off, I didn't disagree with the resolution as it came to us from the county, and mainly that was because it, it was a call to action for us, and I didn't take it as an accusatory thing, as it were, something that was wrong with our borough, because I know it, it wasn't read to me that way. So then, after reviewing and revising it, and coming up with what we came up with, which is on, you know, page 122 of your agenda, I really, in part of the discussion, thought about examples. I wanted specific examples, and John mentioned this, which I thought was good. Where are the examples of the unintended bias that we can actually talk about and review? And that's what, you know, if you took ninety days, maybe you could find more than the two that I'm about to give you. The one was brought to me, my attention by someone, and it's a simple form, okay? So you've all seen it. It's the Skills Bank Form. And guess what its title is? The Citizen Skills Bank Form. So maybe there's something that can be changed, and something so simple that instead of calling it a Citizen Skills Bank Form, we call it a Volunteer Form. And don't turn away people that maybe are here, they live in town, they are here on a work visa, because they're the, you know, they may be the CEO of Merck, you don't know. They're not a citizen, and maybe they're not, you know, reading something the same way you do, because you are a citizen. So I think that is just the simplest of examples of where we can go through and just say, hmm, maybe there is something we can change, and maybe it's something as simple as the title of a form. And then the second example I want to give is from, you know, prior to any of you, or maybe some of you actually being on council, which was a discussion about appointments. And every year, we make appointments to the planning and the zoning committees, and it came down to where a few of us had wanted one person, and another one of us wanted another person, and it was a male and a female. And when I suggested, you know, maybe on the planning board, we could have more females, because there were very few at the time, and I, a fellow council member said to me that that was reverse discrimination, because I wanted to appoint a female. Both had the same qualifications, and that person wanted to appoint a male. So I, for me, that gets internalized, and maybe if you were at that meeting, you don't, you don't remember it, but I do, where it was something against a woman. Now, maybe it's not racism, but it is discrimination. And so those are the small types of things that maybe if that council member had gone through some type of, you know, unbi, how to be unbiased training, then, you know, we would be a little bit better off and make things a little bit better for the residents of our town.
Well, I'll give you a third one.
Please, let me, let me talk for a minute, please. It sounds like you all kind of support the concept of having this resolution, no question. Jeff, thank you for all your efforts on it. It seems the only thing we're having a problem with is the beginning part. You know, I'm okay with setting, and I think everyone is, with looking at things, examining what we're doing. Let me just read a suggested, different beginning. So instead of the first two whereas', we would have, whereas the recent tragedies in Minneapolis and throughout our nation have again shone a light on systemic racism and the current and historically disparate treatment of people of color in our country. And whereas, then it would be the same thing. So we're just taking out those first two, not the, the George Floyd references, but just really what's gone on in our nation, and then leave the ninety days and the test part, but I think that addresses John's concern. Can we do that, or people...
Well, actually, it doesn't really address the whole thing. So like, it only focuses on, if I heard you correctly, it only focuses on issues related to African-Americans. It doesn't...
And people of color and minorities.
Did it say that? Because I didn't hear that.
It will say that.
Okay.
Can you, can you reread it one more time, Mayor, please? And you're, you're suggesting new wording for whereas number one and whereas number two?
Yes.
And all the other whereas' remain unchanged, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, please read it one more time, so I can hear it again? And if you're, you're going to change the wording a little bit, it sounds like on the second whereas, so with the updated wording?
So it would start with, whereas the recent tragedies in Minneapolis and throughout our nation have again shone a light on systemic racism and the current and historically disparate treatment of people of color and minorities in our country. And then it says, and whereas the extent of protests nationally and locally have been a cause for self-examination, that's all the same.
So, I guess I'm unclear about the recent tragedies in Minnesota. It's kind of a broad, what, what does that mean?
Well, it says, that's referring to George Floyd, without, you know, specifying one person. You know, I think maybe that's the...
Well, when you say tragedies in Minnesota, it makes me think, well, okay, there's George Floyd and what?
How about we just say tragedies throughout our nation? We don't have to say it anywhere.
Because it's avoiding the issue. You know, you got to put a name on evil. And in this case, this, this is, you know, there, there are several incidents which have happened in our history that are really hot-button issues. We just lost Congressman John Lewis, as everybody should know, the name Edmund Pettus Bridge. We've had the Birmingham bombings, though, with the four young schoolgirls who were killed. We had the lynching of Emmett Till. We had the murder of Medgar Evers. It goes on and on.
Why do we define the good people by the bad people?
We need to know those names.
But we...
It isn't, you know, one could construe the tragedy in Minnesota, quote-unquote, as the reaction to the arrest of the police officers on the part of people who were supporters of him. You know, it, it's a vague term, and that's why I think it's important to name it as it was, what really happened. We wouldn't be in this spot right now if George Floyd hadn't died.
I, I think if we, if we go with mainly the mayor's rewording, and we just add George Floyd's name as part of the tragedies across the nation, I'm, I'm happy with that. I, I think if you look at what our, our own police chief put out...
Mentioned George Floyd down about five paragraphs. So it does come in, not just, you know, acknowledge leading up and surrounding the death of George Floyd, but also to reduce, address the root causes. I think that really hits it there.
I, I'm concerned that the very first sentence is open to interpretation. What do you mean by the tragedies in Minnesota? First of all, the plurality of it, it confuses me a little bit. And secondly, what, if it's George Floyd and something, what's the and something that you're referring to?
Just throughout our na, well, there's been tragedies...
There's been recent tragedies in Minnesota.
So what else would you, how else would you say?
Well, you could say the tragedy in Minnesota, but at that point, you might as well say George Floyd.
I'm just trying to work a compromise here.
So am I, so am I, but I, I think that you're, I think that the first sentence, as you worded it, Mayor, is, is confusing, and I think it was open to interpretation, and I, I think that's, that's not the purpose.
Maybe throughout our nation, as you said.
Quite frankly, I'm, I'm very happy with the language as it was put forward.
But you're a group of six, and shouldn't it reflect all of the council?
Well, that's why we have a vote. You know, I don't know whether we have to have to have a six-zero agreement. There's no rule that requires that, in my understanding. So we have six voting members, and you're there to break a tie. I think we need to vote on this proposal.
So, Mayor, I think maybe just across the nation, as you alluded to earlier, I think would be, would be workable, then you're not specifying Minnesota.
So, Jeff... That's even, that's even weaker wording than I was happy with.
How about the...
Can I ask an honest question?
Violence throughout our nation, how's that?
So, look, the point here, and that's why I asked what the point here is, right? We want to make sure that our borough is free of racism and bias. I, I think we all generally agree that that is the point.
Yes.
I, I guess I'm unsure, because like, one of the things that I don't like, that's hap, that I'm seeing happen a lot right now, is, and I, and I don't want to use judgmental words. I, I, let me just, I, I would start this, this resolution, whereas the borough of Burnsville is committed to ensure the government, police, economy, recreation, and other aspects of our community are free of racism and bias, I would add the word "and" bias there. Now, let it resolve that we're going to do this, and I would remove all of the stuff at the top, because to me, it's, it's not relevant to the point. We've acknowledged as a, as a council, because we're doing this, based on events that have happened nationally. I would start there. What's the point?
The whereas the borough of Burnsville, that one?
Yeah, that, I, I would start there, and I, I would say, we, we intend fully to have, you know, as, as fair and equitable, a governing body as well as environment as possible, and just start there. I, I don't see the, the need for the other stuff, personally.
I think, I think this, the reason why there's the other stuff is because one has to make a point, and the point has to be ironclad, and it has to be dram, I, I believe, dramaticized. I, I think just to say, bad things happen to good people, and we're going to fix it, is not enough.
You know, the, the...
And I, I think...
Sorry, Jeff.
Sorry, sorry, Tom.
Okay. I, I was, I was quite encouraged by the statement that came out from our Chief of Police. There, there is, to my, to my understanding, no official word, any comment from our council on the events surrounding George Floyd's death. We've said nothing, as far as I know officially, as a council, as a governing body, as far as I know. Maybe correct me if I'm wrong, anybody.
Well, I think the mayor did.
So, as a governing body, we've not, may have said anything. This is our opportunity to go on the record, and I want to be on the record saying that I watched in horror and disbelief the death of George Floyd. Now, if we want to slightly reword that, that's okay with me, but to say, we're going to say there were events in Minnesota, that's like suggesting some people were asked to go to the back of the bus. You know, I think it's much more human to say Rosa Parks' name.
And I also think the part about when you mentioned, what do we, what are we, what is our goal here? I think our goal here is to really get into the nitty-gritty of what we can do to make things better in our town, in terms of diversity and representation of the members of our, of our community. The, the multicultural committee that was just formed is a great example. We can do more, we can be better, and we have people that are underrepresented. That's the bottom line, and that's a lot of what this addresses, whether it's our hiring practices, whether it's our volunteer boards, whether it's our police department. We can do better with diversity. Every corporation is focused on this, every institution is focused on this, and we should be too. That's, that's the goal, and that's what this says.
There, there, there are two components of this. One is the whereas', the other is the action items. The action items lay out a framework for our self-examination, and, and then our remediation, if necessary. And by the way, I can give you another example of unintended, I believe, but true discrimination, and that has to do with the placement of the menorah down near the Nervin Pond, instead of where the Alcott Square, where the Christmas tree is, which we have an ordinance that prohibits religious symbols, but it's called a holiday tree when everybody knows it's a Christmas tree. Now, that's, that's discrimination, and it's unintended, but it's real. So I think that there's, there's two things here. One is that the action item will help us address those things. The whereas' demonstrate our moral indignation, and it's us speaking out as a council, as Councilman O'Day has pointed out. And it puts us front and center, that we think this is really a horrible thing, and we, you know, we, we're going to do everything we can to avoid any hint of that in our community. And I think we need all stake out our positions on this.
Yeah, so let me add then, Chad, to what you said, because you were saying that, you know, we're talking about anti-racism and bias, but I think, and, and nobody really kind of refuted what you had said, but I hear now Christine and Jeff saying it's more about overall diversity and not just about racism and, and, and bias. I mean, I guess if you can...
Oh, and I'm sorry, I actually just realized that my light's not on, so let me turn on my light, so I don't look like a ghost back there.
You know, one thing we don't mention in here is acts of hate, and I know that's one thing that's come out of my diversity council, is not tolerating...
Well, in a way, that's, that's part of the second bullet, which talks about harm. It doesn't specifically say hate. If you want to change harm to hate, we could certainly do that, but I, I, you know, I think that's a fair point.
I know it's, you know, everyone wants to get something done, but we're kind of all over the place, and I'm sort of the, the opinion that I'd rather get something right than sort of like, edit on the fly here, because, you know, I've been following the edits, but it's kind of hard to follow them, because they kind of get convoluted. So, I mean, I don't feel about like, I think we're closer to this conversation than we were, so I, I take that as progress, but I think we could, we could take, stand some more work, I think.
Well, first of all, I don't think we're all over the place, and I think that we, we actually have, have a good document. If we're talking about changing one word, harm to hate, then that's not too hard to get your head around, but I do think that there's an expectation, I believe, that we take a leadership role, and...
Jeff has a diversity council, like, for sure.
To put this off for another month, I think would be unwise.
Jeff, did the diversity council give any feedback on this?
Not to my knowledge. I'm not part of the diversity council. My understanding is that that's a listening group for the mayor, and that's still in the process of formulating, formulating herself.
Actually, quite a few of them are here. I've seen a couple of...
Well, let's open this up for public comment, then.
Well, they haven't seen a copy of it. It's not, you know, unless they, is it on the agenda? Is it attached?
It was, well, it wasn't posted until, at least, Sunday, but it's on...
Can you put it on the, can you share it on the screen for people that are here, to see what we're talking about?
Yeah. I mean, I think again, we're...
Can we limit, if we're going to do that, open it up to the public, which is fine with me, can we limit the questions and comments to the first two whereas' and the ninety-day plan? Because that's the only thing I think that the council here is debating tonight, and so I, I don't want to create, you know, a whole nother area of questioning if we agree on the other parts of the resolution.
And are we even debating on the ninety-day plan?
I don't feel we're debating on the ninety-day plan. If there's anybody that wants the ninety-day plan out, I mean, maybe we could do a straw poll. Right now, I support the ninety-day plan.
I, I support the ninety-day plan as well. I mean, I think we were a little bit too prescriptive in, you know, talking about specifically the Recreation Committee, or whatever, the Recreation Department, or whatever it might be, so, but I support the ninety-day plan overall.
Well, Olivia, if I could just comment about that, then, just to put everybody's mind at ease, so that was, that was something I, I, I thought was important, because recreation's such a big part of our borough, and I think it's really important that we also be, pay, pay a great deal of attention to the youth. I did have a chance to talk to Bob Markowitz about this, our Recreation Director, and he actually had a number of ideas, even before I talked to him about this. And the idea of, you know, for example, of heritage festivals and cultural festivals and things of that nature. The reason why I wanted to include this is because I think that we, again, as I said, we, the council, the borough, have to own it. It's not good enough to put this off to some community group, which was a suggestion, because then it may or may not happen, or it may or may not have the focus that we wish. So that's why it was specifically designated in the resolution to have the borough administrator work with the Recreation Director on these ideas. to have the borough administrator work with the recreation director on these ideas.
Can I just offer a concluding paragraph?
Well, can we first put the, can we first answer the Tom's concept, which, I'm sorry, I didn't think of first, that is, does everybody agree with everything except for the first two bullet points, that we don't need to discuss those, everything else?
Right.
If we can agree with all that, and then the only thing up for discussion is the first two bullet points, then we can also entertain another paragraph.
Okay.
Here's my thought, and it says, identify within 90 days an appropriate vehicle for mandatory training. Doesn't that already happen as part of, like, you know, any organization I've ever been to? There's at least one...
First of all, no, it doesn't. That doesn't happen, and what more, if you read it carefully, it also says that we, as council members, have to go through that training. Now, we get training on budget, we get training on local government rules, we have no training on cultural competency.
Yeah, that's true.
The borough staff and employees don't have to do diversity and training, like, you know?
They do.
My understanding is they do get a periodic lecture from our labor attorney, but that's not the same as an actual bona fide, for want of a better word, course.
So we are agreed on 90 days, the 90-day...
No, it seems too prescriptive to me. I think we have a diversity and a...
Okay.
...community for exactly this reason.
Can we take a straw poll? Is that okay? Can we do that? On the 90-day portion?
Yes, we can.
So, I'm in favor of the 90-day plan.
So am I.
I'll dissent.
Okay.
Gina?
I'm in favor of having a 90-day plan.
Chad?
I'm in favor of a 90-day plan. The thing that gets in my craw about this is, it's already happening. So, Jeff, just in that last sentence, you talked about things that Bob was doing. We talked about things that we were doing. This seems like legislation to legislate, instead of, if we're doing it, if the spirit is right, and you do it, I don't get the point of this.
Well, first of all, we're not legislating, to be clear. We're not legislating. We're directing the administrator to come back to us with a plan, which we may or may not accept, and we may send them back to dive in more in depth. But we're only looking at bits and pieces of things, Chad. And it's only because we occasionally think of something. There's no organized structural examination, and that's what this calls for.
On top of that, I'm not comfortable with the idea that it's probably going on, or even that it is going on, we don't need to write it down. I feel that if it's going on, fine, that's great. I applaud the proactiveness of our staff, if it's already going on. But that does not deter me from writing it down.
So, let me rephrase. There's no point of doing anything if it's not measurable, okay? That's sort of rule number one in running a business. You shouldn't do it if you can't measure it. So, I would follow my own advice.
Well, Neil, Chad...
So, to measure it, to measure it, have you looked at a review of the employees of our town?
So, I was agreeing that it was necessary.
Okay, good.
Okay, so I mean, I didn't hear Jeff Hammond in the straw poll.
Oh gee, let me guess, let me think. I'm not just a yes, I'm a hell yes, come on.
Okay, so, I mean, I don't know if that's enough for people, that the straw poll is five to one, that we should leave the 90-day plan in, and we could then focus on the first two whereas's, maybe?
Okay. Can I just give you a wrap-up paragraph? I have a thing about wrapping things up at the end.
Sure. I mean, that's fine with me, if other people want to do it.
Yeah, please.
Off. So, I just have very last paragraph. Therefore, be it further resolved and reaffirmed that the Borough of Burnsville will maintain constant vigilance with regard to its own public safety policies and actions, and do everything in its power to make certain that Burnsville is and will remain a welcoming community opposed to acts of hate, racism, and bigotry.
I would remove, it's limited to public safety. I would not make it this specific.
Yeah, and it's in all its operations, or all its areas of responsibility, or something like that. I agree with that.
Yeah, that caught my attention, too.
With regard to all its areas of responsibility.
And that, because one of the other bullet points that talks about government, police, fire, the economy, recreation, and names, you know, kind of enumerates all those things. I think that's right. We shouldn't mingle out public safety. I think it's otherwise very good.
Okay, thank you. All right, so now we're back to the first three paragraphs.
Mayor, on your conclusion statement, is there space for the word "bias"? I heard a lot of other appropriate wording that you already used, but I didn't hear the word "bias," and I think that would be helpful to just add it in there.
We have hate, racism, and bigotry, and you want to add "bias"?
Yeah, I mean, it's a bit redundant, but...
I know, it better say it many times. To the bias and bigotry, okay. So, now we're back to the first three paragraphs.
I think it was the first two bullet points to be specific.
What if we, okay, what if we started with sentence one? We watched in horror and disbelief the death of George Floyd.
I'm sorry, Chad, you're fading out. Can you get closer to the mic?
So, where, so start with, whereas, we watched in horror and disbelief the death of George Floyd, okay? Then, whereas Burnsville takes seriously our obligation to make our borough a welcoming environment for all residents, and takes seriously the ideal of equal opportunity, and continue on from there.
Right, and I think in that second, "continue on" part, Councilman, that included the all people of color, or something? I think that was the earlier change that Jeff had...
Yes.
I'm okay with that.
Say that again?
So, starting with line one, we watched in horror with a disbelief of George Floyd. That's the reason why we're doing this. We all sat there and watched in horror.
Right.
We now acknowledge that we need to take serious our obligation to make our borough a welcoming environment. I would argue that it probably already is.
We could even say, we could even say, "recommit" there, if people feel that's better, "recommit," you know?
We, to recommit, I think is even better. Our obligation to make our borough a welcoming environment for our residents. And for me, the American ideal of equal opportunity and equal justice for all is what this country is founded on. So, that absolutely should be there.
The only thing I would say, Councilman, and I agree with pretty much everything you're putting forward there, is that, you know, our country is founded on that belief, but that ideal has not been reached yet. And I think that we need to acknowledge that the ideal exists, and has existed for hundreds of years, but the ideal has not been achieved, and I think that that's an important, you know, clarification.
Well, so then, why don't we say, "and to the commitment of the achievement of a society where we are judged with fairness and solely by the content of our character."
I could go for that.
Where's that?
So, I'm in the one, two, three, four, fifth whereas. So, I struck in this whereas two, three, and four. I'm on whereas five.
You struck three whereas's?
Yeah, I went right from whereas, we watched in horror with George Floyd, then to, so that's the reason. Then, we are taking seriously our obligation to make the borough a welcoming environment, and I think, I like your word, we're adding the commitment to the achievement of a society where we're judged with fairness solely by the content of our character.
You know, I'm not going to carve this up, at least I'm not going to vote to carve this up. You know, for example, I believe it's the one, two, three, fourth bullet point, enumerates all of our responsibilities. But let me ask, you know, since you're convinced that this is a welcoming and wonderful community, and by and large it is, especially for those of us who are white, Mayor, you have something like 25, 26, I don't know how many meetings you've had of your diversity council.
Five.
You've had something like 25 or 26 members there. Has everybody on that committee expressed the feeling that they feel welcome?
No.
Okay, does everybody in that committee express the feeling that they feel safe?
I'd say safe, but not welcome.
Okay. We could go on, and I could ask additional questions, but I think you get the idea that our perspective of how things are in this community aren't exactly the way that other people may perceive it. And I think anybody who's looked at the variety of social media dedicated to Burnsville and Somerset Hills, some on the right, some on the left, can see an abhorrent amount of intolerance.
Yes.
Expressed on social media. So, to think that this is somebody else's problem is folly. This is something we need to address. That's what we tried to write the language to express that type of indignation, that type of call to action. Why are we, let me ask, why are we trying to water this down?
I don't think we're watering it down. I think, again, you're diminishing, you know, we are, but we're not saying we're perfect, and, you know, everything's hunky-dory. We're saying that, look, there's work to be done, but we feel it would by and large a welcoming community, and there are good people, and you're lumping them in with the bad, you know, the people on the fringes. So I think you got to strike a more nuanced balance to get more people on board, because, you know, you don't want to, you know, cause, you know, offense and give people more reason to withdraw from something that should be pulling people together.
Hi, this is Angie Gruber. I'm on the diversity council, and you guys opened it up, so I just have a couple of comments. To the person who said, asked the question of why the need to water this down, that was going to be my exact question as well. I don't understand why a statement just can't be made about the atrocities that have occurred and are occurring in the United States, in the world, and in Burnsville, and own it, vow to do something about it, to address it, and stop trying to say that everything is hunky-dory, there are a few bad people, they're on the fringes. It is utterly reprehensible to me to hear you sit there and say that when I know what's going on in this town.
Thank you, Angie.
I thank you for the input as well. Before you spoke, I was going to say, I am not in any way in favor of watering this down. In fact, I don't know how we got on to striking three and four. I thought we were talking about one and two only. I believe three and four should stay. I agree with Councilman McQueen. Let's leave the first whereas. That is the impetus for this resolution. It's the reason it exists. Without it, it's, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense why we're doing it today without the first whereas.
And then take out the next...
I'm happy to reword more to the mayor's wording on the second whereas. But if everybody else is okay with that, and I don't know if you are, I'm asking the question, then I think we leave the first whereas. It's critical to the purpose of this resolution. And the second whereas, I believe we could go with the mayor's rewording, as long as we can agree on it.
I just don't camera what it was, Tom. We don't have a physical record anywhere of any of these changes.
Well, there's no changes yet. There's only whatever the mayor proposes for the second whereas. There's no other changes right now, other than the second whereas. Is that correct?
Yes.
Well, there's, excuse me, there's the mayor wanted to have the summary statement, so we...
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, and the summary statement that I believe we all agreed on.
Right.
And just to correct the record, so, my reason for shortening it, I believe that things to the point are more appropriate. So, whenever I write a document, it's why are you doing it? What are you doing? So, the why you are doing it, in my opinion, is clearly number one.
The why that I'm doing it is one, two, and three.
And I'm not sure it's so clear, just if we left number one. I'm at the point, I think, you know, listen, I think we've come to the point where we have the mayor read off the second bullet point change.
Sure.
So Anthony can record that. Have the mayor read off the final summary paragraph, so Anthony record that, and then I'm going to move that we vote on it.
Okay, so we're...
Can we read it from top to bottom, just so, you know, I guess I'm trying to follow along at home here, and it's just a, so we're striking what Chad's suggested?
No, absolutely not.
We're taking out, and we're leaving, here we go. Whereas, we watched in horror and disbelief the death of George Floyd, and whereas the recent acts of violence throughout our nation have again shone a light on systemic racism and the current and historically disparate treatment of people of color and minorities in our country, and whereas municipalities are employers of, or financially support police, fire, and emergency medical services, zoning officers...
Let me interrupt you, you left out the third bullet point. Whereas the extent of protests nationally and locally following these events have been a cause for self-examination and where necessary reform. That's the third bullet point.
Yeah, we just changed out the second one. Then it goes on, okay. Whereas...
I'm confused. Are you eliminating that?
No.
Okay.
We're eliminating the second one and putting in what I read.
I know, but as you went on, you didn't read that, you didn't read that current third bullet. You jumped to the before.
No, I'm sorry, that was my mistake.
Okay.
Well, the third one stays. We just replaced the second one.
Very good, thank you.
And then the fourth one is, whereas municipalities are employers of, or financially support police, fire, and emergency medical services, zoning officers, building and maintenance workers, and other workers with responsibilities for public welfare. And whereas Burnsville takes seriously our obligations to make our borough, that should be capital B, a welcoming environment for all our residents, and also takes seriously the American ideal of equal opportunity and equal justice under law and to the achievement of society, where we are judged with fairness and solely by the content of our character. And whereas Burnsville takes seriously its obligation to better our community for all residents, as well as its obligations under federal and state anti-discrimination laws, to ensure equal opportunities throughout the borough, and whereas the Borough of Burnsville calls upon its state and federal legislators to not just acknowledge the events leading up to and surrounding the death of George Floyd, but also to address the root causes. And whereas the Borough of Burnsville is committed to ensuring our government, police, economy, recreation, and other aspects of our community are free of racism. And this one, I think it's just a typo, Jeff, somewhere in there. Now therefore be it resolved, you got by the seams?
Oh, yes, you're right, that is a typo.
Yeah, so...
Not sure how that got there, but by the council of the Borough of Burnsville.
Borough of Burnsville. That a copy of this resolution be served upon our state and federal legislators. And to achieve these goals, the council in the Borough of Burnsville directs the borough administrator to identify within 90 days an appropriate vehicle for mandatory training, I think we need, of council members and borough employees on cultural competencies. And the council directs the borough administrator to develop a plan within 90 days, in concert with department heads, to review borough policies in need of revision or reform to eliminate unintended bias or discrimination, and for seeking diversity in hiring and representation on committees by reaching out to underrepresented segments of the community, and to ensure equal opportunities throughout the borough. And the council asks the borough administrator to work with the recreation director to develop cultural events to create awareness of and showcase the diversity in the community. And the council asks the borough administrator and clerk to seek additional training to fulfill a human relations role for the borough in order to better address complaints and/or concerns from employees or the public. And then I'm adding, therefore be it resolved and reaffirmed that the Borough of Burnsville will maintain constant vigilance with regard to all its areas of responsibility, and do everything in its power to make certain that Burnsville is and will remain a welcoming community opposed to acts of hate, racism, bias, and bigotry. That's it.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay, we need a roll call.
Mr. Donnie?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. McQueen?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Mr. O'Day?
Yes.
Ms. the mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, that was really well done. Thank you all for being honest and working together, really. It was great.
And I think, actually, this was the first, maybe the first example of, from the borough, the fact that we can be inclusive, that we can discuss civilly points of disagreement. I think this leads, acts as a good example.
Yes. I see hands up. Did anybody else want to comment on this? Jan, did you want to say something? Jan Greco?
I'm glad you've answered all my questions, thank you.
Glenn Miller, I see your hand up.
Yes, Mayor, I just, you know, I was really hoping that you guys would have done this in support of what we already do for the fire... in support of what we already do for the fire, first aid, and EMS. We go through extensive harassment and discrimination training every year, and we really enforce that within our emergency services. And, you know, I, I just think that it would be better if it was a positive type of resolution to support what your police, fire, and EMS do, uh, with regards to discrimination and harassment. Uh, we make it a priority every year to get everybody trained, it's mandatory, and we've run it through all of our legal processes with the borough. And, you know, I just, I guess I'm just a little disappointed that it talks about we don't have it, or that we're gonna work towards something that we already do here. And, and I think that that's something that the council needs to understand.
If I could just respond, uh, listen, I appreciate all the, the training that both the police and fire go through. But, uh, and, and actually, it wasn't, uh, pointed as much towards them as to other parts of the, uh, of the borough, and then quite frankly, the, the primary target of that training comment was us, the council people. Um, but I also know that the attorney general has mandated that they're gonna look at additional training being necessary, and that they're looking at the fact that, uh, that at least in terms of police, not necessarily fire, but in terms of police, that they're, uh, gonna increase the number of hours of, of mandatory training required. So I think there's an admission there that, uh, there's, there's improvement to be made.
And I can appreciate that, but I just feel that, you know, the way that the resolution went through and, and was done is it didn't acknowledge the hard effort that we already put forth to make sure that we don't discriminate and we don't harass our people in our municipality. And it did bring up first responders and police, fire, and EMS. So it, I just wanted to be on the record that we are a very, uh, you know, upfront and honest municipality that does whatever we can do to do the best for our citizens.
Thank you.
Glenn, I'm very, I'm very proud of the job that you guys are doing.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chad.
Yeah.
I think Ralph can use your help when he evaluates the policies, and you guys could be the model for the rest of the borough. Because when I, when I was actually, you know, reading this and reviewing it with Jeff, and I, I thought about the actual, you know, different areas of the borough in my head, and I apologize for not saying it, I, I do believe that you guys are a great example of that.
Our police department does a tremendous job as well, so I think that should be commended as well.
Yeah.
And, 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 and to point out, and it was actually brought up maybe too subtly here, but the original language from the freeholders very much targeted public safety in general, and the police in specific. And, uh, I worked hard with, uh, Chief Valentine to remove those negative adversarial comments.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I mean, out of curiosity, did, I mean, did Kevin bring that up too? Cause he was very much involved in the public safety committee as well, right?
Yeah, he's point, he pointed out quite vigorously that they do go through a, a ton of training. Uh, and, uh, uh, you know, they have, they have probably the most rigorous requirements, Lisa, of which I'm aware, maybe the fire department is, is equal to that. Um, but again, as I mentioned, that, that's probably gonna be increased based upon what we were told, uh, in the, uh, town hall that the attorney general had, that the mayor and I, uh, sat in on.
Okay, thank you, Glenn.
Thanks, Glenn.
Thank you, guys.
I much appreciate what you do for us, and, uh, I hope nobody takes this as an affront. I think it's just the idea that we can continually reexamine what we do. And, you know, I, I think part of it will be using the templates that you people, you know, that you're already using to say this is how it should be done. So, thank you.
Uh, I think that was John's point to begin with, right, John? That people are gonna take it in a negative way, or some kind of admission?
Yeah, and I don't want, because too much, maybe if we all read, look, read same book of art and you see it differently, I did feel like it was too much negative, you're not giving credit to people who work quietly, you know, just doing the right thing every day, it's really dramatic, they're not being acknowledged, or, or we're not acknowledging those efforts. And yeah, they're bad people in Bernardsville, I'm sure there are, but also good people who, big day-to-day little things, they're just courteous and polite and non-discriminatory, but then that doesn't, it doesn't acknowledge that enough, I don't think. I mean, I'm happy we did, we were unified on it, but I really think it's, uh, you know, like, I guess, any compromise is never, you know, what everybody wants.
I don't think it's our purpose to pat ourselves on the back, John, uh, you know, I think.
Oh, I'm not patting ourselves on the back, I totally think it's imperfect, but, or it could have been better, but, you know, it's, I don't think that the, this focus on, you know, what we, what we perceive not doing should necessarily outweigh, the, the preponderance, what we do here is good day-to-day, and the people in this town are good day-to-day. And the preponderance, that's, you know, we gotta acknowledge that, without diminishing that bad things happen, you know, we gotta do self-examination, but I just think we struck the right note.
I think we, I think we struck a pretty good balance, and people keep talking about negativeness. I'm, I'm, I'm reading and rereading this resolution, I'm looking for the negative comments that people are referring to. I, I don't see it, uh, if somebody wants to point out the paragraph where we're calling somebody out for bad behavior, I, I don't see that. I, I see, I think what we're doing is we're setting a goal and objective, a high-level objective for us to do better, and anywhere that we assess needs to be done better. It doesn't say anything's not being done properly, it doesn't say something's being done wrong, it says we're gonna look at what we're doing, and we're gonna commit ourselves to do, continue to do the right thing, where we're doing the right thing, and where we identify areas for improvement, we can make improvements. I think it's not negative, uh, that's, that's not how I read it.
Yeah, I think it's the whole continue, yeah, sorry, I think it's the whole continue piece that maybe we didn't put out well enough, I think is what Glenn was referring to.
I think, I think, uh, the bottom line is you don't know what you don't know, and this is, this is really gonna spur us to look hard at what we can, what we're doing, which may be perfect, we may be, we may be the template for the rest of the state, but we also may have, have a lot of things to learn. And it wasn't until very recently that we understood how we advertise for positions, for example, which, you know, i- is, is very limiting. We, we, we advertise, when we have an open job, we advertise in, at the New, at, I was gonna say the New York Journal of Medicine, I'm, I'm lapsing back into.
Wrong job.
My professional life, we, we advertise with the New Jersey League of Municipalities, and we advertise in the Bernardsville News. Now, if we wanna attract a wide swath of people, that's insufficient, but we just found that out. And if I hadn't asked the question at the personnel committee, we still wouldn't be doing anything differently, because nobody would have asked it otherwise. And so that's, that's what the purpose of this is, is that we need to start asking questions, rather than assuming that everything is just perfect.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can, we can cut this, I think it's, it's, it's a matter of not being negative, it's a matter of not accentuating the positive. Sorry, anyway, let's move on.
I don't think, I don't think resolution twenty dash two oh seven was where accentuating the positive is, is, is fits. It's a resolution condemning racism and discrimination.
Yeah. Okay, we're moving on. Uh, council public safety committee, do you have anything else to report?
No, I, I, I just, uh, well, I, I, I did have, uh, this did not come out of the committee, I did have, uh, some things about the, uh, power outage situation that we recently had that I'd like to bring up under new business, but, uh, in terms of the committee, no, with the only activities we've had recently is, uh, uh, this resolution, and of course, the, uh, uh, working with the OEM and the police chief on the, and the CERT team on the shelter, for example, and the, uh, communication with, uh, with all our residents with the recent storm.
Okay, thank you. Um, Councilman O'Day, finance?
Yeah, so the finance committee met, we had a, a productive meeting, uh, we spent a couple of near-term agenda items, but the major item on the agenda was, as we committed to the council in July, that we were gonna look at the, um, multi-year, uh, debt projections, and that we were gonna come back to individual council members, um, with some updated information, and potentially what we decided out of the finance committee meeting was that we would show two different disparate options, not, um, you know, just to kind of illustrate a range, um, of approaches. And, uh, we've got that, uh, in the works. I spoke to our, our borough administrator and our finance, uh, staff today, they said that's going to be ready, based on people's vacation schedules and things, ready later in August, we're gonna review that quickly with the finance committee again, and then prior to the September fourteenth meeting, each individual council member will be invited to meet with, um, the appropriate staff, and maybe some members of finance committee as well, but certainly members of the staff to review in detail, uh, the, the debt plan, and have a, uh, in-depth discussion about that with the staff, and then we'll be able to bring it up in our next, uh, council meeting, uh, if we wanna cover that as an agenda item, for example, um, we can do that, uh, if necessary. But prior to the next meeting, uh, the borough staff's gonna be reaching out to you, to schedule a time to review the debt plan with each and every council member, uh, not just those members on the finance committee.
Thank you.
Can I just go backwards, by the way, to public safety, uh, just to acknowledge something that, that Fire Chief Miller said? The, uh, there was an, an OEM, an Office of Emergency Management post-storm call on an August fifth, and I just wanna highlight, uh, um, that, uh, Chief Valentine specifically called out fire EMS and DPW for the quote phenomenal job, close quote. So I do think that that should not go without recognition.
Absolutely, thank you. Um, Councilwoman Zemara, Public Works?
Um, Public Works postponed our last meeting, but I have, um, some updates regarding current projects.
Okay.
Um, we're just firming up the schedule to begin, uh, milling and paving some of the roads, um, Pickle Brook, and not the entire stretch of Old Army, but we had decided Old Army from Mullins to Anderson Hill, and also Meker. Um, so the schedule is still getting firmed up by, um, Doug. Then, um, also on our list of projects is the walking path at the Polo Grounds. Um, the bids came back, and at this point in time, uh, the rec committee is just reviewing them to provide their input, um, on, you know, what the options are, what the best options are for us in terms of, um, scope and cost. Um, there's also Hull and Lindaberry, uh, having drainage work and some curving work done, and, um, there's, um, work to begin on White Knack Road on August seventeenth. We also have the dam remediation in progress, um, and the library, I just wanna also give a shout out that we did so much work on the library, and that is really, uh, the crutch of this community when it comes to power outage, and, you know, what we saw this week with the storm, so many people went there to have wifi and charge up their phones and get air conditioning, so we really made a great investment in terms of, uh, that library. So I also wanna thank Doug, because he really worked hard on making sure that, you know, the wind and rain didn't come in, so if we didn't do that, it was a good move by him and all of us to get that stuff done. So, uh, there is a few more things that he's working on, but, uh, at this point, it, it's going very well there, we have a great library. Um, I can't think of anything else unless Gina and Tom have anything else, but that's Public Works.
That's all I have.
Okay, uh, land use committee, uh, we were supposed to meet tomorrow, we're pushing it back to the eighteenth because of the storm, um, Topology wasn't able to work because they were out of power, so, um, but you do have a schedule, we asked for, um, a schedule which is in your packet of what to expect, I think it's, actually it's on the, further on in the, uh, agenda. So, uh, we're still on track with the Quimby Lane, um, plan, so hopefully you'll be getting that soon, and you'll all have a chance to sit with Topology before it comes to the whole council, so everyone will have the opportunity to review it and ask questions and with Topology directly. Um, housing, we had Jeff's report, I don't know if, is, um, Renee's gone, okay, so we don't have that. Anybody have committee?
I'm here, Mayor.
Oh, you are, did you have anything else to add to, uh, the report?
Um, I, I mean, they were pretty, pretty normal, I guess you could say, um, there wasn't anything too, anything crazy, um, to discuss, but it's, um, it's great to kinda get back to some type of, you know, normal schedule, um, for the most part, the virtual inspections for rental have been going really well, uh, we've had tremendous, uh, cooperation with landlords and tenants, um, so it, it's been moving along as normal.
Wonderful, thank you, we'll see you Thursday. Um, anybody else have committee reports?
Um, I sort of, I guess I'll wrap them all up, so obviously, the resolution for the zoning overlay is done, I think I mentioned that. Uh, we had a brief personnel committee meeting, um, I don't see Ralph on tonight, so.
He's on vacation.
Um, there, there may be, um, a new position that's opening, uh, but I don't know what's been communicated internally yet, so I'd like to, uh, just be careful, I don't, I don't, I'm not exactly sure how much Ralph has communicated, so let me just, uh, leave that with that.
The, the, the library has been meeting periodically through the storm, uh, that we did have some suspension of services, but they resumed, uh, on Thursday. Um, the library community room was used for the shelter, and, uh, as, um, Councilwoman Zemara pointed out, that, that was extremely successful, uh, there were twenty-two seats there, and while it was never maxed out, um, it was always pretty well, uh, used, uh, I think we had on average about seventy-five people a day, uh, at, at some point or another would come in and, and use the, uh, the facility. Uh, the library's back to its abbreviated hours, and I just wanna let everybody know that, uh, these are abbreviated hours because of our staffing, so they, they should make sure, we had a lot of people show up, um, at the library, uh, a- a- after, you know, for example, it had closed, um, and, and so they have to be aware of what the operating hours are.
Okay. Anyone else?
Um, I missed the Board of Health meeting because it conflicted with our special council meeting, um, but the rec committee did meet, um, they were talking about the, um, Public Works, uh, walking path, um, and they were, they created a, they created a little subcommittee for that, which has been working, um, as Christine reported, and, um, the, the rec camp and pool are, um, moving forward well, and, um, looks to be in the positive, uh, revenue perspective, uh, for those two things opening.
Great, so we also had opened the, um, the showers at the pool for people who needed showers.
Yeah.
We offer that for, without water. Um, okay. Items of business, ten A, and Rich has been very patient, patient here, um, we have a proposal from the Bernardsville Business Association, uh, for the lighting, so, Rich, do you wanna, uh, explain what your intentions are?
Sure, can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Uh, hi, council. Okay, so I represent the Bernardsville Business Association, which started out as a, a Facebook page, and now has become a twenty-five, a hundred and twenty-five member group of people, and many of the businesses in town want a change for the annual Christmas tree lighting. They feel it's become stagnant, stale, and we're proposing to bring energy to it, enthusiasm. Um, I've looked into the things that the mayor asked me about, the insurance is not a problem, getting event insurance is actually not very expensive, um, I own a mixed martial arts school in town, so putting that on my insurance would not be a problem, whatever the town needed, one million, two million, five million, um, we could have as many as five hundred people there at one time for, you know, depending on what we, uh, are hoping to get there. Um, the businesses are hurting, and this is their last chance to make any money for this year, and they're also panicking because they really don't know how long they're gonna be open for. This event has been a one-man show for the last twenty years, from what I'm, you know, told and understanding, and the businesses wanna have a bigger say in it, so we need to get people to come from other towns, we need to get things exciting again, some of the things they're proposing, anything from, uh, you know, um, Fairy Tale Incorporated doing face painting, making ornaments for the trees, we wanna have more activities for kids, bad sweater competition, uh, guess how high the tree is, Santa Claus visit, let's get some storefronts to do like different displays in the competition, get some council vote, best store, best store display, um, talk to some of the vacant stores and the landlords, hey, would you host a Santa Claus in there if we got it? Would you let a pop-up go in there? I'd be glad to speak to Chief Valentine and find out what the restrictions have been in the past, and we're easy to work with. If he says something's not gonna float, then it's not gonna float, no arguments from me, we'll work around things. We'll work around things. This year is going to be a very tough year to do this. Contingencies for weather. Are we still going to be wearing masks? Um, social distancing. It's going to take a lot of planning, which is why I'm here today and not waiting until November, which is when it's usually proposed, because it takes no planning to do the same thing you've done year after year. So some of the things we want to do, um, even propose, someone mentioned a 5K run in the morning. We have a lot of athletes in town who would like to be involved in something like that. I've heard the event is held on a Friday at four or five o'clock and people are just coming home from work. I mean, I'd like to see this be a Saturday where it's an entire day of events, live music. People can plug into My Electric. They can put a band out there. Not I mean Christmas carol old stuff. I mean some good rock and roll, some good Christmas music. Talk to some of the music stores in town, talk to some of the dance schools in town. Um, I've been very, um, I've been very close, become very close with, um, Harvey Goldberg of the theater, which just turned 99. And I put a big thing on, on the community about that. And we're in jeopardy of losing that building and losing that theater. So I'm trying to find a way of getting people to go into the theater, whether it's for popcorn or something on that day. So we need urgency. We need people to go in the, in the town, stay in the town, bring their kids there and then go into these stores. Whatever competitions we have will be ordered with gift certificates to stores. Every store is responsible for their own space. So if you have a table in front of your store, you want to put a little ornament over it in case of bad weather. Talk to me, what do you want to do? What is your thing? Um, I mentioned somebody that maybe Bling, Bling by Design would want to do like a sidewalk fashion show that day. Show off their winter stuff. Um, Rebecca Collection, uh, I've spoken to the coffee shop who will go along with what everybody wants to, you know, whatever he, we want to do, it's cool with them. So, um, this is what we're proposing. Um, to be honest with you, I've run events before. I've done the Jacob Javits Center. You've done that. You can pretty much do everything. That's just an absolute nightmare. We have a lot of people that are enthusiastic about this, um, and we'd like to run the event this year and get all business. Something that Jeff said made a lot of sense. Sorry, Mr. Hammond, I don't know you personally. But I totally agree. We need to reach out to the other religions and, and other things in town. Whether it's a Jewish community, that should be a holiday area. He's right. Calling it a holiday tree is adorable, but it's not really what it is. So we're proposing maybe put a menorah there. Speak to if there is a temple or a Jewish committee in town or a group and ask them, what is it you want? What would you like to see? And give the people what they want, more than having a tree, flicking on a light, couple of Christmas carols and everybody goes home. And most of the stores actually closed down. And these stores are the ones who are still giving money to the Girl Scouts who come to their businesses and the Tricky Tray and everything that comes in there by our calendar. We're still doing all this, but we don't have any money. I'm not open. I mean, I fall into that category of gym, movie theater, and so I've been closed for six months. I'm only allowed to teach private lessons and a lot of other stores are feeling it. They need, honestly, they need some hope. And they're all counting on something big. That's all I got.
Have you worked with, have you worked with the recreation committee or with the recreation director?
No, but that's, that's something I want to reach out to is the parks and recreation. I don't know if they've had a lot of involvement in this before. Has the fire department gotten involved, the police force, the ambulance, um, doing things like coat donations? I'd like to speak to the parks and recreation guy. This should be a town event and not a one person event. Um, I've already been told through the grapevine that, um, the lights, the wreath, the stand all belong to one individual and I guess I would not be able to use it. You know what? Finding lights and a stand is not brain surgery. I'll be able to figure it out. Whatever I don't know, we have enough brain power, enthusiasm to figure this out. We want to get a local guy to donate the tree. Somebody, listen, plenty of trees down in town. There's got to be a big enough tree. We can find someone who wants a tree removed and try to keep everything in Burnsville. So we'd like to embrace the diversity and offer this open to other people instead of just having a Christmas tree.
I mean, isn't so, can I ask what the, um, Burnsville Business Association is? I've never heard of it before.
It's, um, it's actually a Facebook page that I started in January. Businesses in town, working with each other, trying to improve, running only positive advertising, positive marketing. There's a lot of, you know, there's a couple of other sites in town. And if I look at them, they've been dormant for a long time. There's nothing in, no interest, no posts. We have posts going on every single day. Um, are we completely organized? No, for this event we would be. We have a lot of people that are interested in getting involved, um, people that want to enjoy like being a part of the event. Not making it, you know, controversial, adversarial. Everybody wants to make it happen. So the association is a Facebook association. I just had little stickers made up for the doors. I'm not looking to compete with the Chamber of Commerce. I'm looking to, you know, we're all helping each other. There's a great amount of networking going on and we would like to jump off of Facebook and jump into the town and, and do something positive.
Yes. I mean, it's my interesting that the current tree lighting is run by the Lions Club and the, and the Chamber of Commerce. Are you part of the chamber?
I'm not part of the Chamber of Commerce. I'm not part of the Lions Club.
Okay. And not downtown Burnsville either?
Um, no, I'm not, not part of the Alliance. The Burnsville Business Association, we have 125 business members. A lot of them are right in the square there. So, um, being involved in other associations that have either not gotten it done as, maybe as well as it could be done. Um, we want our shot. We want our shot to take it over and, and, and do it big.
Well, I said, that was my, so that was my question. You know, a lot of the things that you were mentioning, Rich, were new novel different, right? Um, what's preventing the new novel different from happening?
In, in conjunction with these other groups that already exist, like why do we need a new one? I don't understand.
Because the event has become stagnant and stale and nobody's going to it. Kids aren't going to it.
Why can't we work? Why can't we work together?
Exclusive. I mean, the, the, the Lions Club can continue to light the tree and you could still do all the other very good ideas that you, you talked about.
Problem has, it's been told to me on a number of occasions that working together with certain people is very, very difficult. I want to do something good for the town. I don't want to create or have a headache or have adversity. Um, last year, just figuring out the time of when to have the event was going between three different groups. And it was, it's a nightmare. This should not, this event should not be such a drag and such a, you know, a nightmare to run. The people that want to do it want to have fun doing it. And so these other groups that you're mentioning, um, you know, I, I honestly, when I spoke to townspeople about this, none of those groups' names came up. One name comes up and one name only, and it's an individual. It's not a group. So it may be under the, you know, umbrella of a group, but this is a one man show. It's been a one man show for a long time. And with us, we are the organizers. It's not me. I'll take full blame if it doesn't work. I'm going to blame me whatever you want, but we're known as the organizers. No one's looking for any legacy. We don't want to bring any attention. We just want to have a great event. There's no egos here. That's the big difference.
Who else is involved? Who, when you talk about organizers in the plural, uh, who else is working with you on the planning?
Um, the Rebecca Collection, Sharon from the Rebecca Collection, Jessica Mosseri from Fairy Tale Incorporated. I spoke to Andreas at the coffee shop and he said, listen, whoever gets the tree, I'm going to help them anyway. Um, Harvey Goldberg, I've spoken to him and a lot of the businesses feel like they're kind of left out of this. Like they don't really get much of a say. So these are the business I've spoken to. Other people have, I'll be honest, supported me in the background, but will not be here this evening to support me in public because they are nervous about backlash. And I'll be quite honest. So we bring a group of people that are easy to work with. I don't think this event should be that difficult if every store owner involved takes responsibility for their specific piece. And in that, up until now, many of the stores even closed on this day and this night because they don't get any action. Nothing happens. It's a tree lighting and everybody goes home. This should be an entire day event. I looked at a lot of other towns, the top 15 in the country. What they do for a day like this is amazing. If we can even come 10% to that, we're going to bring kids into town and they're going to want to stay in town. If people don't.
Whoops, what happened?
Rich, you got muted, Richard.
Yeah.
If people don't shop locally, they don't want to go to malls because they're nervous about the insect. They're going to shop locally or they're going to go online. So if they're in town bringing their kids, they're going to want to go into these stores and buy things. That really is what this event about is to me, is to bring people into center of town.
Okay. Can I just, um, I see Eileen on here has been raising her hand and she's part of the group that's currently doing the lighting. So, um, can we unmute her and let her, uh, weigh in here? Eileen?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Mary Jane. Um, first of all, I want to, I don't know, Richard, so thank you for your suggestions, Richard. Uh, I think you have some great ideas. Um, and I'm not a man and I'm not one person, but I have been, so I'm not part of a one man show. Uh, I have been with this, um, with the Chamber of Commerce and doing this tree lighting for, for more than 10 years, even though it's been going on for like 30. And I'm sorry that I don't, I don't know that I've ever seen you at the event, nor have I ever had anybody reach out to me about wanting to help. And, you know, I, again, I think you have great ideas. I'm also know that we had a lot of people there. We work with the fire department. We work with the Lions Club. We've, um, have several people at the, uh, library after first snacks and Carolene and St- a story. And none of that was mentioned just now. You said they come to the tree and then they leave. That's not true. Uh, I don't know if you've not gone to the library or even attended this event or who you're getting the information from. Um, but it has been, you know, could it be better? Of course, just like we were talking about diversity, we could be better. But, and there's an entire month of December. So all of the things you're talking about would be a great thing on another Saturday or Friday or whatever. Why do we have to celebrate one thing? And why do we have to, um, throw out, you know, the, the baby with the bathwater, you know? If you want to do all those things, great, do them. I'm an event manager for, uh, a bank, so that's what I do. Um, no, I don't do Jacob Javits, but I've worked my butt off for the last 12 years trying to pull things together and begging people to volunteer. So if you guys are volunteering, then let's volunteer. We, we need food. We need, we need things at the library. We, we, we work with a lot of different people, so it's not a one man show. And, um, I, I haven't, you know, that makes me feel like, um, you know, like I'm a ghost or something for the last 12 years of all the time and effort I've put into it. Um, great ideas, great ideas. Do them on another day. We don't, the holiday season isn't just one day. So, um, I disagree with you and I'm sorry that you feel it's blasé, but we're doing the best we can. And I don't see blasé when the fire department comes with Santa and handing out, um, candy canes and, and the carolers, and we've gotten the kids involved. And we've done a lot of different things. So I disagree with you, Richard, but I'm all ears about, um, the suggestions you have. My question is do them on another day if you don't want to do it with the chamber. And if you find our event blasé, then show us up. Do it better on another day.
That's what I'm doing. I'm trying to show you how and doing it on the day. I mean, this is about an event. It's not about an organization or about people. I never mentioned any organizations. What I said was one person's name was repeatedly spoken to me. This is what the local businesses I'm talking to, they want to be more involved. You mentioned a lot of things. None of them were the businesses. You mentioned the fire department, but the businesses are need to be benefit from this. This is supposed to be a big day to get people into town. And I'm going by from what I've been told. Have I gone past the event once or twice in the last eight years I've been in town? Yes. Um, do I think I could do better? Yes.
I think you could do better, but I'm asking you to, instead of trying to take it away from the Chamber of Commerce and the Lions Club and those people who have participated, who have done it for 30 years, do it on another day. And you're, this is a holiday season. It's not a holiday day. And, you know, I, I agree, put a menorah up. It's a good idea. We should be thinking about diversity. But do it on a day that you and your people and whoever you want to do it because there have been several.
Question, what is the protect, what is, so I've, I've heard the word day a couple of times. Um, why is there protection of a day? This seems like this is a town event that everyone that's participating in this town event should participate. Why, why, why am I hearing day frequently?
Um, can I let, uh, Olivia speak?
Sure, sorry.
Go ahead. Olivia, you want to say something?
Am I unmuted? Hi, thank you. Um, I just, I just wanted to mention too, um, and along the lines of actually what Chad just mentioned too, about the one day concept. Um, downtown Burnsville last holiday season, we put on our very first holiday parade for Burnsville. And it was a very, pretty well received event. There are a lot of people that didn't know about it still. It was, you know, part of being a first year event. That's what happened. Um, but we do intend on doing it again this year. The events this year that we were supposed to do and still have potentially on our agenda, obviously with the pandemic, things are difficult to put on because we start promoting them two to three months ahead of the actual events. And we put a lot of money behind promoting the events to get a lot of people from all over New Jersey and beyond to come to our events. The 5K we did for Father's Day last year brought people from Brooklyn and other areas of New York. Um, the trunk or treat we did last year was in a matter of two hours, about 100 and, I'm sorry, 1,500 people. Um, and people were coming from all over New Jersey. So promoting it properly, um, doing the right marketing for the town and for the events that we do is a priority for us. So deciding that we're going to cancel an event for this pandemic situation has been difficult for us, but it has to be done very early so that we don't spend a lot of time and resources to put into an event that is just going to end up being canceled. So for us right now, every year, the last two years so far, and we hope to do it this year, but I doubt it's going to happen. We've also done the cookie crawl for the holiday season, which has been super popular. And last year we got a little bit rained out, but we still had a bunch of people, um, coming on board and doing the, the cookie crawl. So we've, we've done events for holidays as well. And last year we had a little bit of a challenge with the Chamber of Commerce with the tree lighting as well because we wanted to do the parade the same day as the tree lighting. And we, we ended up working together. We figured it out and we did our parade on a different day and everything worked out just fine. Um, but ultimately, you know, we can all do whatever events that we would like to do. We can all support the businesses the way that we do best. Uh, and in, in, in whatever way that we choose. So ultimately, you know, Burnsville has lots of holiday events and my personal goal is to do tons more because I am a holiday nut. I love doing holiday things. So, uh, the more we can do, the better. A holiday market, you know, whatever the case may be. But ultimately we do what we can with the parameters that we have within our town, within the limitations that we have to abide by, by our police, our fire, what have you. Uh, we, we do what we need to do. So ultimately what I would like to say on behalf of downtown Burnsville is that we are happy to work with Rich, with Eileen, with the chamber, with whoever we need to work with to all do things together. There's no reason why we can't as multiple organizations, support our businesses, support our town and be on the same board and perhaps do different types of events and all organize them separately. Because I've been doing events for 20 years on a small scale. And when I mean small scale, I mean for small towns with lots of people. And I, I have an idea of what people like and what people want. And ultimately we need to be mindful of what they want. For this year, we are in a pandemic year. We need to be mindful of that. So consider that as an option. Remember that we have a parade that we're still working on for this year. I hope Chief Valentine is still here to hear that because we still need to work on that. And that the cookie crawl may look a little different this year, but next year we still have plans to put it on. And, and more holiday events moving forward as well. So Rich, if you want to have a chat with me, I'm happy to share my number with you or my email, whatever you prefer. Um, you know, we can figure this all out together. So let's try to do it that way. Okay? That's all I have to say.
Yeah, I'm thinking what might be useful is, um, and he was here, um, our recreation director might be the best person to coordinate all this.
Yes, I actually had a really awesome conversation with Bob last week. Um, and we, we kind of had shared stories about our time machine, our Back to the Future nerdy came out. Um, so, you know, we, we all have, uh, Bob has such amazing ideas. I'm really excited to work with him. Um, I think we could all maybe have a meeting or something or I, I don't know. We can, let's all connect. Let's all figure this this out because we, we all want the same things. So let's try to make that work for everyone.
You here? I see your name.
Yeah. Hey, Mayor, how you doing?
Hi, good.
Hey, Bob, how are you?
Would we?
Good. I just, uh, closed the pool. I listened to on my commute back and now I'm back home. So I've been listening the whole time, driving and everything. Yeah. I had a great. I had a great conversation with Olivia about the events.
Right. So I'm wondering if we're, we would be overburdening you to ask if you would get involved in coordinating our holiday events.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I think that's part of my position.
Excellent. So maybe.
Part of the reason why you brought me here, Bob.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll echo that. I think one of the reasons that he was attractive as a candidate was his ability to work with local businesses in his former position in New York. And that I, I think this is ideal for him.
Me too.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, I mean, look, I mean, Richard, I heard what you have to say. And look, I can speak honestly. We, we want to take whatever action we can at the council level to make sure or help however we can the end of the shopping season to make it as successful as it possibly could be. So if there are things that we need to alter from parking ordinances, different things to help its success, I'm willing to listen and act.
Yeah, but I think, you know, that might be the easiest thing is if we have Bob try and coordinate it rather than us looking at all the pieces and figuring out how they fit together. Does that make sense?
It does make sense.
In your head. Jen, did you want to say something?
Um, I, what Olivia said I thought was actually perfect because it does make sense that like with so many different, everyone has great ideas and why not work together? And last year, I know Richard's never been to the event, but the event was very crowded, the tree lighting. There was probably a couple hundred people there. I went shopping that day. I was the original owner of Bling. And when the tree lighting always happened, I always got business that day. I was lucky to be on that side of the road. But people always came in my store and shopped. And I know the coffee shop handed out hundreds, he said hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of free hot chocolate last year. And he was very excited. And there's so many, and then the next weekend I brought my kids to the parade. So there was two different things. And again, like it is a holiday season. We want people coming into town every weekend, every Saturday and Sunday. At one point the chamber ran, they had the horses down at the train station. Like it didn't really bring people in, but they had all different ideas, like to try and bring people every weekend, not just one day. And I feel like Richard's getting it. There was never any controversy until last year when certain people, it, it was always open to people helping and like no one really got interested. They were focusing on their business. And like they were just trying to get through the holiday season. But there's all, never been like a problem until like last year. And I think one person works for you. I could just seem like it's coming from one person. There's never been any feeling of negativity until last year. And the more the merrier, the more events, like Olivia had the parade, that's awesome. Like any more events, the cookie crawl, like just adding more to the town and the businesses is a good thing. But it's like, again, you don't look a gift to horse in the mouth, like not, it's not, it's an organization that has been donating for 30 years and just like, I, I don't have like a formal organization. I want to take it over because I've heard this. I've heard that. It's not very nice. It's just not. It's not nice. It's, I'm sorry. And that's all I have to say. Like, again, you've never been to the event. You've never really, have you run another event in town? Like it just, it's not nice. And if there's no need for you, you've never been there, you've never seen it. There's a lot of people there and anything can be improved, but the way you're coming at it seems like there's someone telling you to come at it from that angle. Thank you.
No one tells me. I can speak for myself. I have my own mind. I've run events.
Where'd you get the information?
I've, excuse me? Excuse me?
Never been, so where'd you get the information?
I've been, I've been to the event. I have been to the Christmas tree event. I've, I've driven past it. I've walked through it. I've been in business in town for eight years. So I've been to the event. And I'm speaking on behalf of people that want to have a bigger involvement in this and they don't feel like they have it. You know what? I'm, I'm not looking to.
Anyone could have asked to help anytime, not take it, anyone could have asked to help, not also like plan another event at the same time, like ask to help.
I'm, I'm, as far as I was, as far as I know, this event.
Okay, we're done. Okay. I don't, I don't want to get into personalities and, and I think, I think we're going to let Bob kind of get you guys together. And hopefully we can work this out. And hey, the more events and things we can have and the more people participating, the better. I think if we can get lots of people and lots of, and help our businesses, that's our goal, is to really bring the town together. And that's what it's all about. Okay?
Well, if we want to extend the season, and I'm all for that, Mayor, Hanukkah starts on December the 10th. And we could start with that and bring the menorah back to Ockott Square from Irving Pond.
Armenian Christmas is January 6th. Keep going.
That's great. I think the more the merrier. We can extend this, you know, I think, I think it's been very narrow focused on the Christmas tree. And my understanding is that there's an ordinance that would prohibit the other things. I think we need to repeal that and open this up to a broader swath of celebrations.
The other thing we've talked about is, is doing something at the Millicent Fenwick Park. And maybe have them, menorah could be there or the, or the Christmas, excuse me, the holiday, another holiday tree or something else. Another event could be at the Millicent Fenwick Park and then you've got the whole parking lot for people to gather. So there's lots.
I, I, I talked to Chief Valentine about that, actually. There are some difficulties with using the Fenwick area, but that's certainly something that could be explored. It might just be easier to do it, quite frankly, at Ockott Square. But that's something I think Bob could take on. And as long as we're all in agreement that A, we want to involve the business owners. And B, we want to expand this beyond a Christmas tree, then I think everybody's in agreement.
Yep. All right.
On board here.
One thing about the menorah, oh, can I just, Miami.
Go ahead, go ahead. You're good.
To ask you just some, a little bit of history, the chamber used to always put the nativity down by the pond and then the local synagogue would put the menorah there and the chamber provided the insurance and the electrical and everything for it. And then I guess the, the ground's too wet now for the nativity scene. And then I guess at that time, the local rabbi says you didn't want to do it. But it's, like, it's a great idea to move it to a better place where like there isn't that flooding issue. And, but it had been a part of the whole celebration. They always, the menorah used to be there. It was very beautiful. When you drive by and see the menorah and the nativity. That's all I want to say.
Yeah, they were both there.
It used to be in the center of town before, before it got moved there. And you're right, the flooding presented a problem, but quite frankly, it's still in an isolated spot. And I see no reason why we can't, if we're being non discriminatory, you know, we, we could allow a nativity scene and a menorah and a Christmas tree and whatever the Armenian Christmas has as a celebration and we could have a holiday for Eid, you know, for the Muslim community and.
Ockott Square isn't that cool?
So there's a lot of things we could do and I think we should do.
Yeah. Okay. So, um, we good? Yes? Bob, you're good?
Yeah, I hear a lot of enthusiasm for the different groups and that's a great thing. Mayor, if you want to maybe add a question to the diversity committee about different holiday representations and different types of activities and things they'd want to be shown throughout town, that might be a good place to start getting some feedback on that.
Yeah, you're right. Good idea. And I will bring that up with our diversity council too and see if they have ideas.
Just a quick, just a quick thought here too, just about Fenwick Park. We did Small Business Saturday. We did Small Business Saturday. We had our welcome station there last year and it was a great space. I mean, granted, we just had a table with information and tons of our businesses had giveaways and things there. And, you know, we, we did some very calm things there with a tent. So it was fairly simple. So if there's something fairly simple that we can still do there that may be able to last throughout the holiday season, then perhaps that might be something Chief would be interested in discussing. But I, I'm sure there's something that we can, can figure out. There's lots of places in town, even though it seems very limited and we have a very large state road in the middle flying through our town that presents some challenges that are out of the borough's control. You know, there are a lot of things that we can do. So coming up with those solutions is really ultimately what we have been trying to do. So I'm happy to share any information that I already know about with everyone who's, who's involved with this committee in this meeting. So Bob, we've already talked about a lot of this stuff. So I'm sure we can connect on this stuff moving forward. So that's all I want to say.
And I just want to say that the energy that everybody has to put into bringing events to this town is awesome. It just needs to be coordinated. And we're in. We just want to make that happen. Let's just make it happen. Let's talk, talk. I love energy. I love energy.
Energy for the last hour of the council meeting. Moving on.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Richard and, and Eileen and everybody for your, your input. And you will hear from Bob and we'll get this worked out. Okay, we're moving on to renewal of membership in the JIF. What do you need from us, Anthony?
Well, there's a resolution in the pack along with an agreement that we would need council to pass that to, and it's by October 1st to renew our membership in the JIF. We actually have Craig Sutherland here on, on the Zoom meeting tonight from Meker Sharkey to answer any questions you might have about the renewal process and just our services. But we need a resolution, basically.
Well, just before we get to that point, I mean, is this our best option? Have we ever shopped this to see if there's better coverages and pricing out there for, you know, municipal insurance?
Well, I think that's what the JIF does, right? You, you shop.
Are they a broker or are they a carrier?
If I can, if I can give you a little bit of background on this, the, the suburban municipal joint insurance fund, Burnsville has been a member of that joint insurance fund for a long time. There are others that are around to answer your question. Yes, it has been chopped from time to time. And then beyond that, what happens is is that the suburban municipal JIF is part of the municipal excess liability joint insurance fund. They are actually, the Mel actually places the true risk transfer insurance coverage that's associated with the program. Beyond that, they, they also manage all of the risk pooling that takes place within the program, which is where you get the cost efficiencies out of the program. The, you were in with suburban municipal JIF, you're in, you're in with nine other towns on what we would refer to as your primary coverage. And then the excess all goes up into the Mel layers. And they use the buying power of about 500 municipal entities across the state of New Jersey. It's actually the largest municipal excess pool in the country. And it's been, been managed to, to Burnsville benefit for many years. There are, there's the statewide insurance fund. There are other, other joint insurance funds. This has been a very stable fund. It actually has the most risk pooling in it, which has served to control your insurance costs. The joint insurance fund has been very conscious of the 2% cap for many, many years. The insurance market this year is very, very difficult. It's actually reminiscent of the mid 80s, which, which was actually the forerunner to when all of the JIFs were put together in order to help control those costs. So it, it has served very well in terms of managing your costs and being, being a part of this joint insurance fund. You also get significant risk control support with both safety as well as information across the, across the whole of the municipal complex.
That is pretty thorough.
John, you're an insurance, you're an insurance guy. Are you satisfied?
No, not, I'm not purely insurance. I'm actually, it comes from ancillary, you know, little thing on the side, but it's a, I guess, but you know, would it make sense to go to wholesale or, I mean, you know, I don't know what the coverages and pricing next to each other. Is something we should do periodically, I suppose? I mean, is that done? I mean, just to be sure, getting, you know, the best value?
Well, by the pooling of, of the, of the risks, John, and then they go out to the, to the broader market. The, the risk pooling actually helps to, you actually can buy costs through up to, between a million and $2 million is retained by the pools. So that it takes all of the frictional costs out of the program. Because the claims are adjusted for what they are, the pool is certainly large enough for actuarial credibility and, and helps to put those limits on the township. So your, your own loss experience, which has been fairly, fairly good over the years. By the same token, if you have a shock loss, it wouldn't affect your rates materially going forward because you're in the pooling. As opposed to being, as opposed to taking Burnsville to the market on its own. Just to give you a cost comparison, generally speaking, every time we looked at the open market for the municipalities that we work with, the workers' compensation cost alone is more than the assessment that's been, been imparted on the town over all of these years. Because of the strength of the, of the, of the safety program as well as the, as well as the large numbers that are, that are in the pool.
You also offer a lot of training, don't you, through the JIF?
Yes. Yeah, there's a, there's a whole Mel Safety Institute that it's called, and it provides significant amounts of training. Both, both specific to Burnsville as well as throughout the municipalities in the state of New Jersey. It's very, very effective. And it's brought loss costs down very, very significantly over the years, which is what has been served to, to help control your own costs in the process.
Anybody else?
I have a question about the JIF. The, there have been times since my tenure at least where, and we were just talking about events. So we have the Christmas tree lighting, for example. And there have been times when, you know, we've had to check with the JIF and the response was, you know, they won't allow us to do it or something like that. So are there limitations as far as if we were to go out for our own policy, maybe we would have a little more leeway when it comes to being able to sponsor events with large gatherings of people and stuff like that?
So that's part of the risk and safety aspect of all of this that the JIF brings to the table based upon their experience. Most of the time we're able to work out whatever it is that, that you as a town want to do. There are times when the, the recommendation comes back that the insurance should be actually handled by an organizer with the township added as an additional insured in order to protect the township. There are other times if you want to do something, we generally find a way to get it done. There are, there are occasions where no is the answer because it's just not a good idea at the end of the day. But for most of the things that we do, we generally find a solution.
Well, I think the one specific one that comes to mind right now is the, someone was hoping to have an event downtown and there was a restaurant that has a liquor license and wanted to serve alcohol to people and the street would be closed and those people would be on the street. And that was not allowed. Do you know offhand if that's something?
That's, you know, that's up to you as a, as a, as a township to allow or not allow. Your ordinances have recently been changed in order to allow some of the sidewalk dining and things of that nature. And we've been working with the JIF, put forth recommendations for insurance coverage in order to allow that to happen. It really hasn't been, to my knowledge, in the interest of the town to allow people to walk around town consuming alcohol. That hasn't been something that's been presented to us in that fashion. Alcohol is watched very, very closely without any question, under the circumstances for a lot of good reasons. So yes, some things can be a little bit more trying than others, but again, give us a scope, give us an idea as to what, what, to what all of you want to have happen, we can generally find a way to make it happen.
That was state regulations about having open alcohol in the streets.
There are.
So the, the question seems to me though, if the street is closed down, is it the same restriction, whether the street's closed versus open?
I would tell you if the street is closed, that that certainly would make a difference. But we would still come back to you and say, well, look, you know, if this restaurant wants to do this, then these are the insurance limits that we would recommend. We would like to see the township added, added as an additional insured to protect you because you're not actually controlling who's being served or how much they're being served or anything along those lines. That's still going to be the responsibility of the establishment. So you want to have proper protection, insurance protection from them. If we can put those pieces together, we can generally find a way to get it done.
So Craig, then to Councilwoman Zamarra's point, is there greater flexibility if we do something independently than if we do something through the JIF? Which one is more flexible or the flexibility is exactly the same because you're assessing a similar risk?
Well, right now I would tell you pretty straightforward that the flexibility of the JIF is much greater than a one-off proposition. Now, that doesn't mean that you couldn't buy a, an event insurance policy for a day or two to do something, but if you're going to do something longer term, working with the JIF, because the JIF is used to working with municipalities and all kinds of ideas being floated past them all the time. As we say, it represents. As we say, it represents about, it's the collective knowledge of about working with 500 municipal entities across the state of New Jersey. So they work hard to make sure that they're accommodating the municipalities within proper guidelines, within thoughtful guidelines as to what should or shouldn't be done at the end of the day. And most of that is based upon actual experience.
So if you don't mind, I'm going to restate your answer. You tell me if I restated it properly. If we go with the JIF, then our restrictions or our flexibility should be at least as much as if we were out on our own?
Yeah, correct. 100%. Greater, in fact.
Okay.
I think the other advantage of the joint fund is that, like you said, you pooled the risk. So if we have a bad year, it doesn't affect our rates as much as if we were with a single carrier kind of thing.
That is correct.
So that's the big advantage to being in a joint fund.
And Councilman Donahue, are you talking about that as the alternative, going out on our own? Or you're talking about looking at a different JIF to go with?
Well, you know, I'm sort of just grasping around, you know, I'm not super familiar with it. But that was sort of what were the alternatives? Just, you know, see if there was a better value proposition. And I don't have an answer. I'm just asking the question to see if, you know, flesh out some more details, which I think I've heard at least.
And how long is this contract for when we sign it up again?
It is a, the JIF requires a three-year commitment. So you come up every three years for this decision, Mayor? So this would be effective at January 1 of 2021 through 2024.
And should we, because I know sometimes, and I used to be in a joint insurance fund with school boards. And I know if you pull out, there's usually issues too, aren't there? Like you have to keep?
There are, but this is, they're not significant penalties for want of a better description, Mayor. But there are, in terms of some of the dividends and collecting dividends going forward, that will take far more time than on the basis of a continuing membership. But it's not, you don't get penalized per se.
All right. So what do we want to do?
Is the resolution on for tonight? The resolutions, we're going to see it in September.
It's on for tonight. It's up to you if you want to do it tonight. Or I could put it on and officially number it in September. It's up to council.
Is it on the agenda?
It was part of the item of business 10B. There was a letter and then the following page was the actual resolution.
And it has to be done by October 1st?
Well, as a technical matter, 10-1 is the preferred date because then the way that the JIF does its ratings, you're in the pool and you're in the quotation period and you're in with all the information. You can reserve, as a technical matter, you can reserve your right to make that decision closer to January 1. There's no penalty for doing so. It just requires a letter from the township stating that it wants to reserve its options at this time and will make its commitment at a later date. So it's a technical matter. No, it doesn't need to be done by October 1st. From a practical point of view, it's a better proposition if you do because of the way they do the rating propositions.
Okay. So council, what you-
So can I actually ask a question, Mayor?
Who is that?
This is Chad.
Oh, yes.
Anthony, I know Ralph is not here. I mean, have you guys evaluated other options? Is this the direction that you would choose?
We, I don't believe we have evaluated other options. But in the past, they've been great and yes, I would choose them. But to answer your first question, no, we have not. But I certainly would choose them.
Can I offer to the council then that, you know, we could put this as an agenda item on our finance committee meeting, which we're doing later in the month, and have the resolution for September 14th? Still gives us plenty of time before October 1st. In fact, there's even another council meeting before October 1st, I believe. So we have sort of double safety there. I don't see a downside to that. Is there a downside to doing something on September 14th, Mr. Sutherland?
No.
Okay. Well, then I would say we'll get Ralph's input. We'll talk about it at the finance committee meeting. We can direct internal staff, Anthony, to, you know, see if we can maybe get some other quotes or options for the finance committee to review. And then we'll bring it as a resolution on the 14th. Does that sound like a good idea?
I think that's fine.
Yes. Okay. Finance committee, it's yours. All right. Thank you, Craig, for hanging in with us this late.
Thank you, council. I appreciate your time. Happy to work forward, looking forward to working with you through the resolution of this.
Thank you.
Okay. 10-C, we have the vendor signs on the football field fence. This is on the turf field. The youth football asked if they could get some sponsorships to put vendor signs up. And we checked with zoning with Jeff and there is no zoning that prohibits it. So it's really just up to the council. I know we do it at Kiwanis Field. They have sponsored banners up and it would help them with some of their expenses. So is everybody on-
Is this also something that needs to go or have some coordination through Bob or not? I'm fine with them doing it. I think they should.
Yeah, I think the only question is, is setting limits on the time, like how long they're up. You know, once their season's over, we don't want them up there in the snow, you know, I mean.
I think that's a reasonable limitation. I think obviously we'd like to have, you know, the right of saying that's not appropriate for our field. I think, you know, we should be able to say we don't approve of that specific sign or something.
Yeah, but Tom, you're not going to want to approve-
No, no, no. I don't want approval of the signs. I want a sign that's deemed offensive and brought in front of the council, the ability to say, we don't want that particular sign.
I see.
Yeah. And then the other thing I would say that they should face the field and not face outside the field. I think we should put that caveat in there.
I didn't, what do you do at Little League? What is-
They face the inner, so actually let me rephrase. There are various tiers of funding. So there are multiple signs that face the inner side of the field. However, we have some broader, bigger sponsors that sponsor the scoreboard, for example. We have one sponsor that has a relatively big sign. It's the top of one of the backstops. So the majority face the inner field, but there are some exceptions.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, they, I think sizing might, I think, I don't know if we want to, I mean, you can let Jeff and them handle that. I mean, I've seen some like five-foot signs. I don't know. Again, I don't know if there's any sizing that we want to keep in line with. But I think also if you're talking about facing the inside and outside of the field, it's actually something I never thought about, Tom. But the way that the turf field is, you would only see, only half the people would see half the signs in that case. It's a little different with baseball and the way you stand on the two sides versus football. So.
Well, it'll sort of be the same thing, right, Gina? Because if you're on, if you're facing the outside, you'd only see it if you're on the other side of the field, right?
Yeah, well, if you're the home team, you'll see the opposite side. If you're the away team, you're going to see the opposite side. Whereas like when you're in a dugout, you kind of see the whole infield, kind of, you know, you see all the signs.
And just the question I have is, you know, do we want, we want signs all along that one side of the fence that sort of faces the parking lot, you know what I mean? I don't know, then it just feels like it's advertising, not a, you know, I don't know.
Well, yeah, that, well, it is what it is. That is a fundraising opportunity. But yeah, I hear what you're saying. I think in the past-
I mean, if you think about, if you think about MetLife Stadium or if you think about, you know, a soccer field, you know, the signs go along the sidelines and one side of the field sees the one sign. And if somebody wants to advertise, everybody see it, they buy one sign on each side, you know?
Yeah, yeah. Usually they're on the one side anyway. I don't know if they've ever gone all the way around. I don't know if they've ever had that many sponsors.
Two signs also isn't a bad idea, Gina. Yeah, because you're going to have levels of sponsorship.
Yeah.
And we have to say, obviously, we don't want them where the pads are in the end zone. So they can't be near the pads either, obviously.
No, they'd be on the fence where it's not, yeah.
And then I would say they shouldn't exceed the height of the fence either. Like you don't want the sign to be taller than the fence is.
Yeah.
Right. So are you suggesting that we approve them first or that they?
No, I would suggest that we have the ability to reject it if a complaint comes in front of us.
I mean, we'll trust that they-
Yeah, I think you got to benefit of the doubt for common sense. I mean, same thing with Little League, I suppose. If someone wanted to, you know, put a gentleman's club up there, you know, they'd probably say no before it got to us.
I imagine it would, which is why I don't think we need to be involved until there's an issue, you know?
Yeah, yeah. And they make the signs themselves. Like they get the logos from the companies and then they order it and pay for them.
It's really, I mean, my only thought is it's just a safety valve, you know, case, the worst case scenario, which I don't anticipate would ever happen.
Okay, so we can tell them they're good, but they need to give us, or maybe we need to have a cutoff when they come down.
Well, that's the other thought is like, obviously, I think, you know, we don't want a sign that's up there and starts to deteriorate, even if it's taken down in the offseason. But you put it back up and it's a deteriorated sign, you know, we wouldn't want that either, you know?
Yeah. What they usually do is take them down and wash them and store them in the offseason and then put them back up in the event that, you know, it's a repeat.
I have every confidence that they're going to do things the right way. I firmly believe that. I just think that as a council, we should just have these little caveats in there. So if something goes wrong 10 years down the road, you know, we can't be said, well, you know, you guys don't have the authority to tell us to take that sign down, you know?
Yeah. Yeah. And usually they are only up during the football season itself.
Right.
They should come down after that.
And did we agree whether or not they should be facing the field or if they can be on the out, facing outside of the field?
Anybody have a problem with that? They're facing in?
They face into the field is my proposal.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. I don't want to preclude them from being able to raise money. If they're, if the people, you know, doing the fundraising have a problem with that, I don't know. Maybe you can talk with them and see what.
Why don't we, why don't we say that anything facing the field is their discretion and anything outside of that, they ask for specific permission for? That way they could sell the advertising on the scoreboard or something else.
I was so, yeah, I was thinking about, I mean, is there a bigger opportunity? I know that, you know, turf replacement and various things, I mean, is there a bigger opportunity for a corporate sponsorship?
Yeah. I mean.
That's probably a council discussion, though.
I just, I just don't think we should say anything goes, you know, because then we don't know, you know?
Yeah. Bob, I'm going to put this on you again.
Sounds good, Mayor. We had that initial call with the football organization. I got a good feeling about the, you know, they definitely defer to council on any issues regarding the signs. Definitely felt like that speaker with them. So I think we could work with them and I think they'll work with us on whatever we decide on sign placement and all those types of things.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Yeah, moving on. A request to remove sewer fee interest for 37 mine and 14 burners. I'm not sure why it's two properties. Why is it two properties?
I think that person just owns two properties, I believe.
What's the logic for the request?
Let me take a look here.
She said that she read the due date was extended till July. And I guess, I don't know when she actually paid, but she got a late fee of $29.
Yeah, I believe she paid after the, because we extended the grace period to July 15th and I believe she had paid after that and got some interest charged.
She's paying full now, other than the-
Other than the-
Late fee?
I didn't hear that if you were asking me.
The person is paying full now, other than the late fee?
She's paid the full amount plus the late fee.
I thought you did-
Remove it. It's kind of like the deal we get, you know?
Did she pay the whole thing?
I'm not sure.
Or she's waiting to see if we take off the late fee before she-
Yeah, either that or she paid the whole thing and now is awaiting a refund. It's one or the other, but she was looking for that amount back.
I just don't understand why, you know, she's saying she had an emergency with COVID. I don't know what that meant. But she owns two properties.
Yeah, she owns two properties.
Does she live at one and rent the other? Is that?
Yeah, I would assume so. Yeah.
You know, but we're talking $29 here, so I don't know.
Well, I just don't want to set a precedent, you know?
Yeah, good, Tom. Like, you know, it's, I mean, it's what it is.
There may be other users out there who haven't paid yet either.
Yes.
Who are going to get charged interest.
Right. And they'll say the same thing.
Or may have already paid interest.
I was, I was under the impression that for property taxes, that the borough cannot waive interest even if we wanted to for property taxes.
That is true for property taxes.
So that does not apply to sewer.
That's right. That's the local discretion. Because we have our own sewer plan.
But we already have, we already extended it. I mean, she should have paid by June 30th, right?
I think it was July 15th, I want to say.
No, but that was with the extension.
I'm sorry. Yes, right, right.
Original date, so we already gave her an extra two weeks. So normally she would have paid by June 30th.
Wait, it's actually, they actually do April 15th.
Yeah, as we say, it's actually a three-month extension.
It's, they're due by April 15th, so we extended it.
No refund. You have plenty of time. Sorry. That's me. Anybody else?
I mean, if they could talk about some extenuating circumstance, I'm not aware of any extenuating circumstances here.
That was, I didn't realize they had that much time to pay.
Tom's precedent point is one thing is then, you know, what do you say that's not extenuating? That, I just mean, it's, you know, we extended it, late fees, like any bill, frankly, you know, so.
Yeah.
Jack, would making a decision like this set a precedent or is that not really an issue?
Well, it may not set a legal precedent, but you're certainly going to set a precedent in people's minds.
Yep.
Yeah, and we don't know how many people haven't paid yet that may have an issue.
We're not really like a credit card company where we can issue a one-time courtesy late fee removal.
I think there's been adequate time. I would deny the request.
Okay, I think we covered that one. Quiet zones, I think the issue with this, you know, we visited this once before. And the issue we have, and I checked with Doug again on this, is in order to have a quiet zone, you have to be at least half a mile from the next crossing. And none of our crossings are half a mile apart, which means we would not qualify for a quiet zone. We went through this with Henry Rushman when he had asked. Got six, I think, very close together. No, can't do.
I agree. We looked at this in depth a year ago and we, for a variety of reasons, we really didn't have the grounds to appeal. The only thing we could do is if we think that they're being excessive, we could ask New Jersey Transit to counsel the engineers to adhere to their own rules. I think that was one of the concerns that the Rushmans had.
Well, I think the problem is they changed the horns. They're new horns on, I mean, or not the horns, the engines have, or the trains are newer and the horns have a different sound that's louder. But they'll have to do the two long, one short, one long, whatever, at every crossing. It does sound loud. And they can't not blow the horn unless it's a quiet zone, so. So that's our response is they're not, we don't qualify for the half mile.
Okay, I can respond to him by email and tell him that that half mile rule is why we can't do it.
Yeah. The Peters Track Path, I think, I talked to Ralph about this. We don't, you know, they wanted another $380 for seeds. Is that what that's about? And Ralph said we would just cut a purchase order from Public Works. We don't need to do this through-
Open space.
Open space.
He said buildings and grounds, I think, it would come under instead of open space.
Yeah. We'll do buildings and grounds.
That's what he said.
To deal with that. And it looks like they really made some great progress on cutting that path from the pictures Ed showed. It looked really good. So a big thank you to Ed for getting that organized. The RFP for the restaurant at the train station, we had the draft of that. Gina, you had a point to make about the restrooms. We wanted to- Um, the RFP for the restaurant at the train station, we had the draft of that. Gina, you had a, a point to make about the restrooms. We wanted to?
Yeah, when I read the RFP, it just said that the restrooms were excluded. And I just thought that from, at least from what I've heard, and I've never actually been in there, is that they are not in very good shape. And I thought that a renter might be able to make some updates to them rather than leaving that on the borough. Um, if we included it as part of their, um, lease, under their lease, and then, you know, we could kind of keep, maintain use of it for the, the needs for the people waiting at the train station and, and whatever. Um, but it would be under their responsibility and then they can make improvements as they, as they see fit, rather than leaving that on the borough.
That, that makes sense. In fact, that's the way our prior sublease was. And the reason they're in such bad shape is due to our prior subtenant. I tried to say that diplomatically.
Hey, say that, say that again. What was that?
The obligation to maintain the restrooms was on our previous subtenant. He did not do a very good job.
I see.
Mayor, can I, can I just say something? I, I haven't seen the RFP, but something you may or may not be aware of is we do have some, um, technology that's in that building that's housed in, in some secure closets in there that control our, uh, surveillance system and surveillance cameras. So I don't know if that was specifically mentioned in the RFP as far as maintaining that space for that use for us.
No, but I can add, Chief.
Yeah, do that.
We can talk about it, Jack. I don't want to get into detail, but we need, we do have, uh, some equipment there.
Oh, great. Certainly, I can add that.
So, uh, based on Councilwoman McCready's question then, we want it, we want, you're saying, Jack, that we want to maintain control of the bathrooms because the experience in the past is that we don't, we don't have a good.
No, I think, I, I think if we get a reputable tenant, we can certainly put the onus on tenant to maintain the bathrooms. They're just gonna have to be open to commuters at least during the morning rush. And one thing our lease with New Jersey Transit provides is that they've got to keep it open during the morning and evening rush. So I'm gonna write to, to Mike Murphy at New Jersey Transit and say, can we limit it to the morning? Because there's really not a need uh, for station facilities for commuters coming home at night.
Is it possible, is it possible to have a second set of restrooms?
I'm sorry?
Is it possible to create a second set of restroom?
Well, it's so small in there, I don't think you could, but. The space is.
If it's required, you can just get porta potties. I don't, most stations only have a porta potty.
Most of the trains coming home have restrooms in them, so, you know, in theory, you can, you know, use the train restroom.
Yeah, I wonder how much they actually get used by commuters.
Don't know. The, and remember too, this is an RFP, so a lot of this details could be worked out as part of the negotiations process.
Yeah. Is everybody okay with the, um, the percentages for evaluation?
I was.
We had the, uh, 35% was improvements to the location, 25% was financial benefit, 20% was experience, and 20% was financial capability. I like that improvements to location got the, gets the most consideration.
Yeah, I agree, because it's, uh, it's the first thing your eye catches when you come through town, you know, I mean, to my eye.
So I, I like the breakdown and I don't necessarily want to debate it, but financial benefit's a little bit nebulous because improvements to the location could also be a financial benefit, you know?
They're all somewhat subjective.
Yeah, they are.
Okay, well, no need to change, I guess. It, does the, does the RFP indicate that we have a, uh, what is it, concessionary license for the place?
Yes. Not that we have. It gives, it gives them the authority to apply for one, that we will consent to that application.
Part, they, but they can recognize that as part of their proposal, that they'd be eligible for this concessionary license?
Yes, there's a specific paragraph on that topic.
So the concept here, and, and, uh, just clarifying now, not.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
From clar, we're doing this RFP for specifically a restaurant. Like, we're not opening this up to a gift shop or anything else at this point. We're just going out for RFPs restaurants. If we find one that we like, we'll go with it. If not, then we may have a different RFP in the future. Is that the idea?
I, I mean, it's up to you all. Uh, we got this idea from New Jersey Transit, who were on the verge of doing in Chatham. It never happened. So it's basically there. And I think, I think it's better in the case of an RFP to try to narrow the permitted uses. As you say, if we don't get an acceptable, uh, proposal, we can always try something else. But it's up to you all.
It sounds like the right approach to me.
I think, I think.
It does to me as well.
A food type place.
I mean.
Well, especially the, the assignment, I mean, incorrect word, but the, the liquor license that could be applied.
Yes.
Great value.
Which adds value to it, absolutely.
Yeah.
So the, the issue is though, in the middle of the COVID pandemic, this RFP is likely to have somebody who's gonna be hedging their bet that they can even open in December, you know?
Yep.
And all I can say is, uh, Amon keeps bugging me every time I eat at Easter 73. When is the?
Okay, well, I mean, we, we can put it out there and say no if you don't get a good response, right?
Yeah, we, we reserve the right to reject all proposals.
Yeah, but, you know, people have still been asking, so there's still.
It definitely has in here about outdoor seating, right? Because I could have sworn I read that.
Yeah, I, no, I don't think it does, but that's something we can add. It's difficult on a long-term basis though, because we listed New Jersey Transit and they require commuter parking, so I'm, I'm not sure we can promise that on a long-term basis.
But does the parking have to be right in front of the building like that? Does it require that those are the four, like, couldn't the four spots, you know, with large concrete, you know, planters be sectioned off as a, as an eating area? And that, I mean, there's still plenty of commuter parking, not those four spot, you know?
Hey, Jack, is a, is a commuter parking requirement commensurate with ridership? Because I mean, you know, in this day and age, we're working from home, if for, let's say, two years, it would be 160 was the number I heard. We're down like 90 riders. Can we apportion that, say, you know?
Well, we used to have a waiting list for parking for minutes at the station, you know, and now we don't even sell them out. Let me run it by Transit.
Yeah, because if we only have a 90 riders day versus 200, there's no sense, you know, in the same.
I agree.
That same lines, can the footprint for outdoor dining expand, especially in the way we, we've expanded it throughout the rest of the borough?
I agree.
Yeah, I mean, I'd love to see outdoor dining in front of the train station. I think it would be aesthetically and, and it would be a draw. I think it'd be great. I think that there's two questions, Jack. There was the one which is, can we take, you know, the commuter parking can be wherever the commuter parking is, does not be right in front of the building, question number one. And now, question number two, does it need to be the same order of magnitude, uh, given, you know, changes in ridership? I think that was Councilman Donahue's question. So it seems like two questions we need New Jersey Transit to address.
Yeah, and I think, and then I think the third is, is in regards to the, the actual footprint, right? Because if we have to remove or, or change the parking to accommodate outdoor dining in a permanent way, does that require DOT permission as well?
Yeah, it, it, it does require New Jersey Transit approval, but I'll, I'll reach out to them and see what the receptive is.
Well, because if we can offer during summers a, a bigger outdoor dining footprint, the, the amount that we can raise and, and rent goes up as well.
Absolutely.
And we need to change, we need to change the RFP then too, Jack, is that right?
That's what I mean.
Yeah, absolutely, yes, yes.
I would also mention that, um, if they, you know, if you want to give them examples, right now, Far Hills Train Station Trackside Diner, or whatever it's called, Trackside, they have some tables outside. And so does Milburn.
Yeah, now I think those are temporary, but I'll, you know, I'll find out whether they'll, uh, allow us to do it on a permanent basis.
Yeah, I don't understand the, in terms of the, the, the parking spots that are right in front of the building, those were all short-term 15-minute parking because the previous tenant was a fast food place. So they really weren't intended for commuters at all.
I agree. Those, there were 10, there were 10 spots reserved for the, the deli.
Right, so we, we, we don't really need those spots at all. And that, uh, you know, that, that should be the, uh, outdoor dining spot.
No, I, I agree, you know.
I don't know, we have time to Chief Valentine.
If anybody's been to the Washington House in Basking Ridge, you can see they have these huge planters, giant planters, um, that are holding their tents down. And something like that, you know, big concrete planter would provide both safety and, safety and aesthetics.
Well, they have, that's like federal buildings for security purposes.
Right, yeah, bollards and like.
Yes, exactly. Let me check. I will add these things, assuming NJ Transit will go along with them.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. Um, Topology gave us a timeline for the redevelopment plan, so, um, we're still on track for that. Um, so we had a copy of that, and I already talked about that, so, um, we'll move on to Mayor's update. Um, as we said before, Bob and I and Ralph, um, had a uh, phone conference with the youth football. Um, they're new board members and they're really enthusiastic about getting some new improvements over there and, uh, I know Bob's been working with them, so hopefully we'll get some, uh, they're gonna do some minor improvements to the snack bar and some other, uh, cleanup things over there. Uh, I think the county calls are now going down to once a week, right, Anthony?
Uh, yes, not Thursdays only.
Yeah, so those will only be once a week. Um, I actually got to go to a reception at the Heritage, the condo over by St. Bernard, which are gorgeous. Um, very nicely done, um, quite expensive, but they're all, they have one, one person living there, um, and I think two under contract right now. We had, the diversity council has met four or five times. Cheryl Martins, who is a resident in town and a professional facilitator, has volunteered, um, with the committee and she is gonna be facilitating the goal-setting for that group, which I think is really terrific that she's donating her time. We've been doing daily calls with JC P and L. I can't tell you how much people have been unhappy with them. So, um, I think once we finish all this, we'll probably have to, uh, deal with some of the fallout from some of the residents and the complaints we've been getting. Um, the vision planning we did, I checked the document. I think I'm the only one that has put anything on it. Remember, we're supposed to put our three short-term and three long-term. So, um, if you haven't had a chance to get to that, uh, Anthony had shared the, the Google Doc. We also, there is now a, uh, small landlord emergency grant program for landlords to get reimbursed for lost rent, which hopefully will help, uh, keeping evictions down. So, um, Jeff, I've asked Jeff, Jeff Price to notify all our owners of rental property about that grant. Um, I did resubmit to, uh, NJ DOT for parking, uh, to use the parking spots along 202 that we talked about at the last meeting. And I just got the permit today. Um, they're allowing us to do that. I emailed, uh, all of the five restaurants and only the Bernard's Cafe so far has shown an interest. So I'll see where that goes. But we did get it approved. So if anybody decides they want to use the parking spots, the, the permit is good through October. And there are, there are conditions that come with it. You know, you have to have, I'm sure it's, I haven't read them all because I just got the letter this afternoon, um, as to for safety and whatever, so they have to meet those conditions. But at least we got the permission, so.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I think if we've got a permission and we've got an interested restaurant, um, I think we should let them do it. Uh, we should not stop them, is all I'm saying.
Completely agree. Well, I, I think we've already paved the way, so we don't even need to do anything more.
Yep.
The old ordinance did that, so, not, I don't want to use the old.
No, we, right, we should just make sure we, we tell them they can do it. And, and we should probably remind the restaurants who have expressed an interest that they're welcome to do it if they choose to.
Would you be able to circulate what the safety requirements are, just so for the Public Safety Committee and Chief Valentine?
Yes, I will send you all the conditions. Um, I just got it today and haven't read through it, so I will pass that on. And I will, uh, reach out again to the rest of the restaurants now that we actually have the permit. Um, correspondence? I don't think we had any, do we?
No, I didn't have any.
Okay, and unfinished business, anything? And somebody said new business. Jeff, I think you had something?
Well, I have actually three items that, uh, but they're all related to the storm, uh, power outage and some ideas for us to entertain. You know, I think, uh, I think we, we're way beyond Mayor, the fallout idea. I think we, we have a bunch of irate, and understandably irate people. Um, and I think there's actually been some harm, uh, as well, but I think, uh, there's some opportunity here for us. I had the, I, I had the chance to speak at length with, uh, the mayor of Robbinsville. And you may have seen the news report that, uh, uh, came out, I think, two or three days ago. Robbinsville is interesting in that they, um, they're split. They have, uh, part of the town is JC P and L and part is P S E and G. Um, other towns are like that as well. Wes Windsor is that way, uh, Wachung is that way. But in 2011, uh, they had, and I, I think it was post Sandy, they had such a bad experience that they ended up suing JC P and L.
Wow.
And they, they sued them for, I believe it was $96,000, which is what they calculated as the, uh, in their opinion, unnecessary police and DPW costs because of the poor response from, uh, JC P and L. And in fact, JC P and L settled, uh, uh, didn't have the exact number, but it was approximately 80, 85% of what they asked for. As well as they got concessions from JC P and L that they would harden, um, the infrastructure in the town and do some other improvements. Now, whether they actually did that or not, the mayor, Mayor Freed, uh, said that he would give them a C in terms of, uh, improvements of the infrastructure, which is still better than nothing. And he gave them an F in terms of improvements in communication. But he is getting ready to sue them again. And, um, uh, and I asked him whether I could share this information and he said for sure, because he's gonna go to the New Jersey League municipalities to see whether other municipalities would want to join in on this. And I'm thinking, and I wonder whether the, the council would entertain us asking, um, you know, Jack, Mr. Pigeon to, uh, explore this with their, their council. They actually have two in-house councils in, in Robbinsville, uh, to whether we would want to join that, because we must have uh, accrued public safety DPW costs. Uh, I know for sure that we had excess costs related to, um, 202 and, uh, the, the train station. Um, that, that we had because of, uh, safety that, uh, because of their tardiness. I know from Chief Valentine that, uh, their engineers, uh, he had to go around with their engineers to help them find locations because they had outdated or outmoded maps. So if we could calculate what our loss was, uh, I would suggest we join this. Plus it will send a message to JC P and L and as well as we could potentially extract some other infrastructure changes that, uh, will help prevent a, a future, uh, what I think has been a catastrophe here.
Well, the, the, your point about hardening certain points, I think would, would be a service to our residents. You know, it's one thing to recoup excess funds that the, the borough has incurred. I think just as important is that the point of hardening points that seemingly could be improved and.
Yes, and what, because what I've, what I've heard from, I don't want to speak for the chief, he's, he's on the line, he can speak for himself, but I think, uh, we have, have the feeling that our, the equipment here is not the latest and greatest. It's not the best that they could do. So what's everybody's appetite for joining a lawsuit?
I like it. I mean, I like, I like the idea of investigating it.
Yeah, I, I will call the attorney.
Maybe I misspoke. I, I don't mean we're gonna launch a suit, but we could investigate.
I, I will call the attorney and, uh, report back.
Are we gonna send our chief negotiator?
I'm sorry?
We're gonna send our chief negotiator, huh? Isn't that what you called Jack that one night? That was pretty funny, sorry.
So the second thing that has to do, and which is actually an extension, um, of this, the, the mayor, Mayor Freed from Robbinsville, uh, is, uh, they had previously appealed to the BPU to have the entire town converted over to P S E and G. Um, and you may have seen the quote that he had in the paper. He reiterated it to me in our phone call that, um, comparing the two, and this is really a natural experiment, uh, since they're both in his town. He said, uh, it's comparing the New York Yankees to a T-ball team. And that the response of P S E and G has been very good, their, their preparation and their response, uh, was far superior to JC P and L. Now, uh, P S E and G is in, uh, Wachung and Warren. And the thing I think we might want to explore, if everybody's willing, is, uh, perhaps we collaborate with Basking Ridge, who also had a, uh, Bernard's Township, which also. perhaps we collaborate with Baskin Ridge, who also had a Bernard's Township, which also had a bad experience, and see whether we could appeal to the BPU that PSE and G comes into our region because we would be contiguous with Warren and Wachung. And that might be attractive for PSE and G to expand its catchment area. PSE and G is a local company, JCP and L is based out of Ohio. We are not top of mind for JCP and L. And I think if we keep doing what we're doing, we're gonna get the same outcome. Nothing changed after Sandy, nothing changed after Irene. And my prediction is nothing is gonna change after this storm. So what would be the thoughts of the council? That we reach out to Bernard's Township and see whether they would be interested in us collectively approaching the BPU and seeing whether PSE and G could come into our area?
And where are they in Wachung right now, you said, or Warren?
Both.
Oh.
I think it makes sense. Competition's good. It might get, you might get a quicker response than threatening to sue them.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, it's the same idea with Jeff. You know, we, we, we don't know if there's a better deal out there unless we look into it.
And we already have PSE and G for guests, so.
That's right, that's right. The, the third thing that I wanted to bring up is that Robbinsville has a generator exchange. And they put this in place a number of years ago after one of the major storms, and they used some of the funds, the federal funds that they got to purchase generators. And then they also coordinate private citizens who have a generator that they're willing to loan. And we saw this, you know, on the bubble, we saw this repeatedly. People who had power were willing to share their generator in the short term. So Robbinsville has purchased approximately, they didn't have the exact number, the person I talked to, approximately 15 generators. And then they, they have a coordinated program through the DPW where people who are willing to share their generator, should they have power, the DPW picks it up, takes it to the, the house that's needed and also helps them with the fuel and, and making sure that it's safely operated. The program originated with OEM, but was quickly turned over after a couple of years, was turned over to DPW. They, they have a prioritization scheme where people who have medical needs, for example, they require refrigerated medications and those who have health concerns, for example, they, they need oxygen, CPAP machines, somebody at home is on a home ventilator, that they have the highest priority. And I, I was able to talk at length with, with one of the dispatchers in OEM, which, who works with the program. And it's, and it's been working well. They've had it for over six years, I believe, and never had any real problems. And I just think that this is something for us to explore. And what I noticed on the bubble, there was quite a few residents who were talking about, you know, I've been out of power for three and four days and my medication's going bad, or I have an elderly parent who's, who's required, you know, who's dependent upon oxygen. And I, I'd like us to explore this. I'd like us to charge our OEM and DPW to look, to at least check it out with Robbinsville and see whether this is a program we could institute.
Yeah, I mean, Robbinsville is hugely bigger than we are, so, you know, we might not need quite as big a.
Right. Robbinsville's approximately 20,000 people, I believe 20,000 people, they're 20 square miles, so they're about twice as big as we are. Don't always speak less.
Yeah, let's go for it.
I think it's a great idea.
I'm, I'm supportive. I guess I would have one, one comment. I mean, there's a, there's a proliferation of generators in and around my, my home and neighborhood and it gets quite loud when the power goes out. But I don't know if there's any consideration for that, you know. They run 24/7. You put four of them in a, in a relatively small area, gets to be pretty loud.
Those Honda ones are really expensive, but they're super quiet.
Yeah, well, I think, I think what you're hearing are the, are the small generators that are gas powered and that, you know, don't, don't power the whole house. So the ones that are hooked into your gas are probably less, less noisy.
Right, but I mean, the ones you're talking about are the smaller, more portable ones, aren't, aren't they Jeff?
That's correct. But I think if we limit it to, and this could actually also be collabora, coordinated with our Smart 911 program, you know, if we have identifiable households where there's a, a potential health hazard through loss of power, you know, that, that might be something to pursue. You know, obviously, people are, you know, going more and more for generators now because this is just becoming a recurrent problem here. The solution would be, you know, to, to stop it at the, at the, at the core. I think we have to look at our tree maintenance program. Now, right now, my understanding from John McDowell is that both JCP and L and PSE and G adhere to state guidelines, which mandate that tree maintenance can cut backs every four years. That's really not adequate. That, that's not frequent enough, at least not in this environment. I don't know about you guys, but I, I have tree trimmers out at least every year to make sure that dead branches are, are removed.
That should be one of the major points of our contention. If we go, if we go to court over this and we get some sort of settlement, maybe we could get a disproportionately more frequent tree maintenance program implemented in our town.
Exactly.
Yeah, the other issue I think with this particular storm is the combination of the pandemic. So everyone couldn't gather in the neighbor's house like we've done in the past. So people were really isolated, more so than usual.
Yes.
Made it worse.
I, I agree.
Those are my three ideas slash proposals that I, I, I think we at least ought to look into.
I, so my only point about the generator exchange is I think, you know, we, we need to prioritize it and, and make it for people who have a, you know, have a documented need, you know?
Yeah, that's fine.
I had one other thing I forgot, which I wanted to ask if you were interested, and I spoke to Ralph about this. Is possibly open, you know, normally we only open the landfill for brush on Saturdays. Maybe opening it during the week because people have lots of branch to get rid of. You know, if it's during regular hours, we could probably work with somebody off DPW to get over there and, and, you know, just something to help the residents who now have all these branches to get rid of. Or their lawn services could dump them or whatever.
I like that idea and I prefer to opening on Sunday in the sense that we have to pay double time if it's open on Sunday. But, you know, can residents get there on weekdays as easily as a weekend?
A lot of them have, you know, if they have a lawn service or a yard service, they, you know, they could dump them there and possibly then give them a discount because they're bringing them local.
Okay.
So.
I don't have a problem with that idea.
Yeah, I don't either. I mean, if you think about, I, I appreciate your, your question about people's time, but it's an extra day, so it's gonna hopefully benefit somebody.
Just make sure we publicize it, I guess, once we decide what day.
I was trying to figure out, I was trying to figure out the right place and I know Bob's been doing a lot to try to increase the social media outreach. I mean, obviously, the, the borough website's probably a good spot. I just wanna make sure that people know about it.
Yeah. I know people were asking about extended hours, so I think if we do something during the week, it might help. Okay, I'll tell John McDowell. I'll talk to him. Okay. Any other new business?
Can I just bring up one more time this request that we changed the name of the Skills Bank form? To volunteer application or something? I'm open to suggestions, but just to change the name of it because a borough employee brought it to my attention. And I think she's absolutely right that it shouldn't be named what it's named right now.
I like you said Resident Skills Bank.
Resident, right, because we do have the resident requirement, so.
You know, we wanna know what their skills are, so I think skills is appropriate. But I, yeah, resident might be a better word than citizen.
Well, but, so, but resident is an entirely uniform, right? We have some non-residents still which volunteer, or is that not the case anymore?
No, I don't think so. I mean, to be on any of our boards and things, we're supposed to be a resident, most of them.
I mean, volunteer form is also fine. I, I mean, I.
Yeah. Volunteer Skills Bank, it could be that.
I'm okay with that too.
I'm happy with resident or volunteer, but volunteer is less, less gray for people, whatever.
Yeah, volunteer says what it is, right?
Volunteer Skills Bank?
Yeah, I like keeping skills in there.
Okay, Volunteer Skills Bank sounds, sounds good, then if everybody agrees.
Yep. Can you do that? Okay.
Yeah, I can change that.
All right.
Mary Jean, I just wanted to ask about the timeline for the redevelopment. I noticed that there were just, you know, kind of key dates or whatever, but I wasn't exactly sure kind of where those dates end. And I know, like, there was discussion about either going back out to RFP, excuse me, or looking at developers in a different way. So I wanted to just ask if that is in that plan, a, a kind of a go-no-go decision, if you will, on, on what's happening from like how the developers are being chosen? Or is that, or would that happen after that, where like the timeline kind of ends at this point? Would that be a decision after that? Would that be a next step?
Yes, that is the next step. After you approve the plan, then it will be a council decision as to whether you wanna do an RFP, you want to talk to the existing, you know, the people who put an RFP in last time, or you wanna talk to the owners. That's a council decision at that point, once you have the plan in hand. We can't point anybody to the plan is done. So that's gonna be your, you know, up to you how you wanna do it, if you wanna, or, or do both. You know, you could do both. You could put out an RFP and also talk to the, you know, so maybe you'll, somebody new will show up and you'll have more of a, a plan, but it's really your decision.
Oh, okay. I wasn't aware. Okay, good, thank you.
So, so that's subsequent to October 13th, as the mayor said. And I think the other point was that there are re recommendations from the committee, but it's ultimately the council who gets to decide how we wanna go about doing it. So the committee might say, well, we think you should do this or in this order. And of course, that will be their recommendation, their guidance, but it's completely up to the council to take the reins and decide, you know, how to move forward from October 13.
Perfect. Thanks for all the info.
Okay, we have one more open session now, so is somebody want to speak at this point?
I think Glenn.
Glenn does.
Hi Mayor.
Hi Glenn.
I actually need John or Jack Pigeon to get on because
Who's there?
At the last council meeting, you, the Personnel Committee believed that fire and EMS did not fall within the jurisdiction of the Borough Handbook and the policies and procedures. And I asked Jack to reach out and I believe Jack can give you some guidance in that. I'm gonna ask the council to exclude fire and EMS from the Personnel Handbook as it regards to COVID and allow me as the department head to work with Human Resources and Ralph to have a hybrid COVID plan for the volunteers of the Fire and First Rescue Squad.
I, I did speak to Glenn and then I reached out to Lisa Barry Quick and it was her opinion that the volunteers should be subject to the 14-day quarantine requirement. I certainly understand Glenn's position with volunteers. If he has to quarantine so many, too many people, he's not gonna have the, the resources to serve the town. So, you know, I said to Glenn, I, I agree with your position. Lisa Barry Quick took a very conservative position.
I mean, Glenn, the whole reason why we took the position we did is we did not wanna treat any borough employees more harshly than others, if that makes sense. So the, the thought of exempting some and not others, we wanted to make sure that everybody had the same position. But if, if it benefits you, I mean, I'm speaking personally, I mean, I'm, I'm fine. But the, the, the position that we took was we didn't wanna be any harsher in one place than the other.
So the problem I have is that I have volunteers who may work out of state, who may have to travel out of state for work, who may have a home out of state. And you're making it so that I have, I already have limited manpower to deal with the emergencies that we have within our municipality. And for me to have to quarantine people that we've been supervising from day one since COVID started and we are the front line of these people with the Police Department. And we have had success with the program that we have in place. And medical personnel and EMS and fire are excluded under this EO from having to have, be part of the municipal plan. So that's all I'm asking for you to do is honor that piece of the EO that allows the fire and police, or the fire and the EMS to be excluded from the 14-day quarantine.
Well, I, I agree with Chief Miller's point. I was gonna bring it up, he already said it. The executive order says that, that first responders and medical personnel or healthcare professionals are excluded from the requirement to quarantine for 14 days. So I don't think we, we should be putting on a harsher than what the order says.
Oh, it's, well, it's actually, so I agree with, with, with the chief. But I wanna make sure that we're not flipping it. So the, the decision we made, we made the decision not to mandate folks to come back to work without their quarantine. So, but if, if, if the chief needs it for, to operate the department, I'm perfectly fine letting him.
All I really need is you guys to agree to allow us to function under the EO and not the stipulations that you put under all the borough employees.
The liability if somebody came back and infected both other employees or other people, I mean, wasn't.
That was Lisa's, that was Lisa's rationale.
Yeah, I mean, her, she put, she said, her logic, as I understood it, was that if we waived it, then that puts us at liability.
What happens if it's a fire and nobody can show up though?
What are we waiving though? We're, 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 we're creating a more stringent circumstance by requiring a 14-day quarantine when an executive order doesn't require it.
I mean, understand something. I've been, we've been dealing with this since March 13th as a department, as fire and EMS. We have no cases whatsoever in our department. We've handled the EMS, we've handled the fire for the borough. We've worked intimately with the Police Department and OEM. And I just, you know, if I have to start quarantining people, I'll lose three, four people this coming week alone.
Oh yeah, don't, don't, don't get me wrong, I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just trying to explain, for those who were not on the call with, with the Labor Attorney, what her logic was. Her feeling was, is that if, we, we don't really wanna be encouraging people to go out of state to one of the states that require quarantine. And if we, if we relax, to your point, that if we relax the prohibitions, we might, we might find that we're encouraging that. And, and then that puts us at liability. I think, maybe I'm, hopefully I'm not the speaking, but Jack, isn't that what her position was?
That was Lisa's rationale, no question. As I said, Bob is here, he may wanna weigh in, put him on the spot.
Nice.
Yeah, the, the concern is that if, that people are going to be more inclined to travel out of state. It's exactly what Jeff said and it's a balancing test. And it's a difficult decision to make. I mean, here, here, both sides of the coin are equally very important. Obviously, if you, if you don't have your first responders available, that's as bad as people leaving the state. Really don't have to leave the state.
I, I think, you know, an all volunteer force like we have under Chief Miller is not the same as, as the other employees that are covered by our Borough Handbook. And I, he's asking for the flexibility, I think we should grant it.
I agree with you. I agree.
Is there, what is your, chief, what is the, what is the quarantine that you currently entertain? If you didn't do the 14 days and somebody voluntarily, you know, not like a health emergency of a family member, they volunteer, voluntarily go to their vacation home in a state where there, there's a problem, what do you, when they come back into New Jersey?
When they come back into New Jersey, we've been making them wear their masks 100% of the time around all of the people. We've done spacing in all of our apparatus. We do disinfection after every single run. So we have social distancing, we have spacing, we have masks, we have disinfection, we have temperature checks, and then, since this has gone on, we've required a 72-hour COVID test and then possibly one at five days.
How long do you get the results back, though?
Within a day if we go to the hospital.
Sorry, within a day, what?
If we go to the hospital, we can get them back within a day.
Because you're prioritized, because you're first responders. Got it, thank you. I, I think we should grant the flexibility.
Thank you, that was, that was good information, thank you.
Okay.
We need to take a vote, or?
Yes, yes, please do, please do a motion on the record.
Okay, who would like to move that?
I'll move it, since, I'll, I move, I move to accept Chief Miller's request that we exempt his volunteer force from mandatory quarantine.
Second.
Can we do an all-in favor, or you want to roll call?
Let's take a roll call, please.
Roll call.
You're on mute, Anthony.
Sorry, this is the mayor.
Yes.
Mr. O'Day?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Ms. McReedy?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Okay, there you go, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for your time. Thanks, Jack.
You're good.
Yep, you're welcome.
Did anyone, we're still in public session, anyone else want to speak? Hands up, I don't see any. I will close the public session. Oh, now we're ready for the closed session. Do you have a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We just take five real quick for?
Quick five.
Major break?
Yes.